There we go. I got it started.
Got it.
Okay. All right, so approve the agenda. So we've got the consent agenda. If you want to get a chance to review that. Looking for any updated documents other than the claim approval list. We're to the vector, Cass County Vector Control. In the claim approval. Under invoices.
I don't have anything under invoices. Did you say the?
The vector control. Let's see, where was that? So it's essentially, Britten can probably explain it better than I can. I took a look at the document and it's essentially the agreement.
Oh, it's our normal. Yes, it's our normal. Yeah.
Territorial area.
Correct.
So it's basically our standard agreement. That we have with them. It's June 1st to July 31st to provide mosquito control.
Correct. Yep, where they fund a dollar per resident out of the.
Right.
Yeah, we pay eleven thousand six hundred and four and they take a portion as well as they cover. So. Eleven thousand six hundred and fours are additional.
Right. So is there any questions on that or any of the questions on the other? Anything else? If not, accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'm moved.
Chelsea makes a motion. Do I hear a second?
John Second.
On a second, oh, do a vote. Or approve.
Hi.
Hi.
All opposed, same sign. No opposed, motion carries. All right, so we'll go through and take a look at the meeting minutes. Last meeting.
I didn't really see anything out of place in relation to that.
I didn't either.
No, I didn't see anything. I looked accurate from my, my review. Motion to approve.
So moved, Dave.
Dave approves.
John Second.
John Second, all approved.
Hi.
Right, same sign. Right, motion carries. So minutes are approved. All right, so if there will, the section for the public comment. Dave or anyone, if you can watch the Q and A, if you.
I'm watching the Q and A and there's nothing. So if any one of you that is any of our citizens that are online right now would like to put a question or anything into the Q and A area. Please feel free, we will try and answer it. But there's none at this time, Brian.
Okay, so with that, we will go ahead and move past that. Looking for the, do we have the file for the sheriff's report? I didn't see.
I didn't see it in the list as I was looking through.
I didn't see it in the list of the documents. Anybody else see it? Must not have received that update.
Nope, I don't see it in the documents either.
Okay, so we'll, we'll go ahead and postpone that and we'll, we'll ask the deputies to provide an update for the next meeting.
Brian, I made it in here finally, sorry.
Hey Cory. All right, so we are at, Cory, I'll let you take over and we are at agenda item number eight.
Got it. Hey, thanks guys. Um, okay, Barrett, you got this one to start out with the comprehensive plan. Why don't you give a little bit of detail about it and then we'll go to the public hearing, kind of where we're at with it, okay? Just a general overview.
Can I hear you, Barrett?
You're on mute.
Barrett, are you there? Can you hear us?
I, I don't even see him in the meeting.
I heard him talking for, he was pretty quiet right away, but I could hear him right away he was talking, but now I can't hear him.
Who's he logged in as, Cory?
Barrett, who are you logged in as? He says logged in or he's usually.
But in the meeting, in the meeting, who's he show up as? Cause I am not seeing him on, I see a city of Horace attendee. I don't know if that's him or somebody else, but we do not see him in the meeting.
He's the attendee, yep.
Okay.
So he needs to be brought in as a.
Yep, I will move him over right now.
Can you hear me now?
Correct, yes we can.
Turn up your volume a little bit more, Barrett.
Apologize, I don't see a volume setting.
It's okay, you're good. We can hear you.
All right, thank you. So what you have before you is the final draft of the Horus 2045 Comprehensive and Transportation Plan that's been prepared by Stan Techs. Under the direction of the Planning Commission. And the Fargo-Moorhead Metropolitan Council of Governments. This plan will be replacing the Horus 2028 Comprehensive Plan. And the Planning Commission has reviewed and approved of the final draft. As of last week. I have Stan Tech online tonight to provide you an overview of the final draft.
So where would you like me to go, Barrett?
Phil Carlson is on, on as a participant. I would like you to activate him as a panelist, please.
Yeah, I think I'm on as a panelist.
You are, yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Phil.
And my colleagues Wendy Van Dyne, Peggy Harder and Dylan Brown are here too. I don't know if you've got the presentation, I saw it earlier. That started out, there we go. And what, what we would like to do is just very briefly go through this presentation. We don't want to. Get an in-depth thing. We assume you've, you've looked at the plan or are familiar with what's happened. Wendy, why don't you start us out here?
Yeah, no, thank you very much, Phil. Good evening, council members. First of all, thank you so much for. Taking out some time this evening to allow us to provide our final presentation and update on the Horus 2045 Comprehensive and Transportation Plan. This has been the result of many months of work and coordination with many of you on the council, including. Councilmember Johnson, who's been actively involved in this process from start to finish. Next slide, please. We want to provide just a brief overview on the key aspects of the plan. This is the same presentation that you provided to the Planning and Zoning Commission last Tuesday evening, after which they, they did. Accept and recommend this plan for approval. When I quickly provided overview of the process that we utilize for this planning study. And then Phil is going to provide some additional detail unto the small area plans that have been developed in conjunction with this plan. Peggy Harder is going to provide an overview of the transportation recommendations. And I'll close out our brief presentation by providing an overview of the parks and recreation components. And then opening it up for general questions and answers for those of you who are on the line this evening. Next slide, please. The, the process of the plan has really been steadily, steadily completed over the course of about eighteen months. We kicked off the plan in January 2018 with a number of public meetings and steering committee meetings. That occurred not only from January twenty, twenty eighteen, but all the way through the end of February earlier this year. Throughout the course of the plan, there were some key milestones that our team hit. The first of which was the adoption of the Future Land Use Map, which was developed through significant community input and was adopted formally in July of last year. And then our team spent last fall working closely with Barrett and Brent and many of the other study review committee representatives. To refine the plan and develop the, the final plan which you see before you. We held our final study review committee meeting alongside our final public meeting earlier this year in February. Of which we were able to share our updates to the small area plan recommendations. And the final transportation recommendations which you see this evening. Following that meeting, we did open it up for a two-week public comment period. And we have incorporated all the public comments that we received through that open, open window. For residents of Horus and of the broader county to weigh in on the plan. So here we are this evening with the final plan, which has been approved by the city commission, or excuse me, by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And we're very happy to share the final content with you here this evening. Next slide.
So let me just provide a brief overview of some of the pieces of the plan. Of course, the comprehensive plan looks to. Analyze various systems in the city in anticipation of significant growth. You know, Horus is, whether you consider it lucky or unlucky in the path of significant growth in, in the metropolitan area. And this map shows the existing land use, you know, some residential and. Small commercial and public uses, but largely agriculture and vacant land. Next slide, please. So the Future Land Use Plan, and this is what was adopted, anticipated what might happen by 2045. Shows then a lot of more bright colors with residential, commercial, mixed use, industrial, more public lands. And of course, the, the wide green swath going through the middle of the community is the, is the Fargo-Moorhead diversion. Which is expected to come through Horus and the significant development will happen. East of that and west of that would remain largely rural. But within this, next, next slide, please. We anticipate that most of the significant development will happen in the area, but we call these two small area plans. Meaning areas that were studied in more detail. Next. And those are, the first is around the intersection of County Road seventeen and seventy-sixth Avenue, and this is a close-up of that area. Showing seventy-six running east-west, seventeen north and south, of course. And there was an area defined that would have significant development around that intersection. About a half mile either side of seventy-sixth out to the drain and then just a little bit west of that. Old Town area, a little smaller area defined as the small area plan. About half mile either side of eighty-eighth or, or Wall Avenue. But similarly with some more detailed study. Next slide. And in this area, and we're back at seventeen and seventy-sixth. The, the kind of red peach colored areas, we're calling mixed use and this could be commercial and residential. Probably near the intersection, more commercial, as you get away from that intersection, maybe less commercial. But it could be mixed up and down, commercial on the ground level, residential above. Or next to each other on the same parcel or different parcels. But we do expect there to be some significant development and interest in development around that intersection. As you move out away from there, we transition to the orange that would be more compact residential. Of course, the big blue areas are the two middle schools, excuse me, the middle school and the high school, the two schools. That are under construction and they'll be really a focus of that area and provide a lot of the activity in that area. And so this would really be one of the prime neighborhoods developing in Horus in, in coming years. Next. And one of the things we looked at very carefully was transportation in the roadway system and I won't go into every detail on this map. But it's important to start with the existing intersections and then think through clearly what happens as you go north and south on seventeen. And especially east and west on seventy-sixth Avenue. That with the current roundabout investment at seventeen and seventy-sixth. And Peggy can explain this more later. Roundabouts work well with other roundabouts as you are on the same corridor. Roundabouts don't work well with signalized intersections. So we're not likely to see signals at any of the major intersections. Either side of the seventeen and seventy-sixth roundabout. And plus, but there still are some spacing considerations and so again, we analyze this fairly carefully. To see what made sense and what didn't. You don't want to put in full roundabouts or intersections. Because it would be unsafe or just foul up the traffic. But you could have allowed some right-in, right-outs at reasonable distances. And so this map represents what we think is the future transportation plan for that focused area. That at Lakeview Drive, which is the west side of the school campus, there'd be a major intersection. Going east from that, you have sixty-third, that would be another intersection with seventy-sixth, et cetera. And you can see the circles are future roundabouts. We're not building all this right now, only as needed. And then filling in between, we'd have smaller collector routes. And there are some considerations with the, working with the schools, working with commercial development and working with future. Residential and some of the existing streets, trying to get it all to work together as a system, as a network. And this is the, the plan that, that we've come up with. Next, please. So again, these kind of very high-level major districts, mixed use in the, in the red. Compact residential in the next layer beyond that, the schools being a major part of the, of the land use. And this activity with schools, with commercial and higher density residential at the intersection. And then neighborhoods surrounding it, we think will, will create a very interesting integrated neighborhood in this part of Horus. Next, please. So we delved into some design standards to say, okay, if you want something that really reflects your, your, your wishes and that is not just. What I'll call same old, same old suburban development, then you need to have some standards in place. That would guide, not only encourage, but require certain things. And so we did put together a series of design standards that would encourage a walkable neighborhood. Mixed uses, allow them both up and down, as I said. And that, and a higher density in this concentrated area will create customers for those businesses. And assure that they'll be more successful. One important thing about creating this character is buildings close to the street. Putting parking to the side or to the rear, and so it's not in the front. So you don't get your typical big box with three hundred feet of parking and then a building way back. Try and bring those buildings up close to the street and you create this more interesting. Area with some character and makes it more walkable, friendly to that. Next, please. So a second part of that then is, as we move out in the blocks away from that immediate intense intersection. Would be the residential areas, again transitioning from higher density to medium density to lower density. But still trying to keep some of that character and keep the buildings close to the street, keep parking behind. So that you really can have sidewalks and create a pedestrian-friendly area that has some character. And important in this is if we're allowing and encouraging a walkable neighborhood. Then connection to the trails and parks, and that's been taken into account in the plan, in these small area plans. Next, please. So in the Old Town area, we did a similar exercise showing some mixed use right at the, at the corner across from the main intersection, across from. Freed Park there. And again, transitioning from mixed use to higher density to lower density. And there's already a plat approved there that has a large open space and ponding area. And so we worked with that to try and connect this all together. To make sense of, of a neighborhood that really could be something interesting and exciting in, in that part of town. Next, please. So some of the same principles apply and then as we get to the next blocks east of there, it would transition. More into more residential and less mixed use, but still maintaining some of those same concepts. To create a walkable neighborhood and someplace with some character and identity. Next, please. So we did this based on what's been done in dozens and dozens of places around the country. Including some that I've been involved with personally in the Minneapolis-St. Paul area. Examples, heart of the city in Burnsville, Minnesota. We've got this example from Monroe Street in Spokane, Washington. And several others that are mentioned in the comprehensive plan itself to show that this has been done, it can be done. You can create places that will encourage this kind of development and walkable character. Next, please. So we included some drawings, illustrations to say, this is what we mean by this. This is what we mean by parking to the side and rear, creating a street edge. Creating a landscape boulevard and sidewalks, buildings close to the street, two-story minimum buildings, et cetera. So these drawings could then be translated to specific zoning code standards. That would then encourage and require these things so that you can be assured that what you say you want in the plan will actually show up in the development. Next, please. So transportation, I'm going to hand this off to Peggy Harder and she can explain the larger context of transportation in the plan.
Thank you, Phil. For the transportation portion of the plan, we really, really looked at what's existing today. What are those future land uses that are approved? A lot of detail into the small area plans. And really for this guidance, we focused on mobility and safety, accommodating that exists in future development. And what we did was we developed street typologies that were actually already developed by a document that the Fargo-Moorhead Metropolitan Council of Governments had identified. And we applied these street typologies to the arterial and collector roadways in Horus. That give us guidance for access, speed, number of traffic lanes, intersection control typology. Where you would want on or off-street parking, pedestrian facilities. And that all incorporates not only into what are the future traffic volumes going to be on these roadways. But it also looks at the adjacent land uses in the area. Next slide, please. Just to give you a general idea, and this will really provide some guidance to the city as, as some of these new roadways are constructed. It's hard to apply some of these to the existing roadways unless they go under a full reconstruction. But as new roadways are also constructed, you can see the type of guidance. Arterial roadways such as seventy-sixth Avenue South and County Road seventeen. Might either be a commercial arterial or a mixed-use arterial street typology. Kind of provides maximum speed limits that you would want on those roadways. It pairs with the future land uses adjacent to those in the small area plans and throughout the entire city of Horus growth area. identifies travel lanes, things like what types of pedestrian crossings you might want to have. And an important piece is some maximum spacing standards between not only where accesses are located on those arterials, those maximum spacings. But where you would want to have intersection controls such as a traffic signal or a roundabout. Next slide, please. And then we applied this also to your collector roadways. So those collector roadways really. Collecting the traffic from your neighborhoods and feeding it out to the arterials. Again, divided it up whether it's near mixed-use type land use or if it's a collector roadway that's collecting the roadway directly from those residential neighborhoods. Again, great guidance that you guys can review and the Planning and Zoning Commission can review. As they're looking at some of these new developments and new proposed roadways. Next slide, please. Now Phil touched a little bit in his portion of the presentation of the small area plans on the roundabouts and I wanted to go into. A little bit more depth on this because this is something, you know, we've had some questions throughout. Phil mentioned the current investment at County Road seventeen and seventy-sixth Avenue South. You guys recently made a major investment. And intersection control there as a roundabout. The way that, that intersection control works when they're next to each other and Phil mentioned roundabouts and traffic signals don't work well together. When they're spaced too closely together. And if you can kind of picture this as I explain it. Let's, let's look at the, the, the existing roundabout at seventeen and seventy-six and let's picture one, a future one directly to the east of there. Just adjacent to the, the future middle school and high school. If traffic is leaving that roundabout and going to the east and let's say there's a signal there instead. If that signal is red, your traffic's going to back up into the existing roundabout. If it's going the other way, if there would be a signal there instead of a roundabout. And you have a whole bunch of traffic getting a green light at the same time heading west in your existing roundabout. You get a very large platoon of traffic entering the roundabout. Where roundabouts operate much better when traffic gets to it intermittently. And that's why they don't work very well when they're spaced too closely together. Now by no means are we saying go out and build all of these roundabouts. What we're really showing here is if you think back about those street typologies we just talked about. With this dark red part of seventy-six being a commercial arterial. And then the, the light kind of salmon pink colored of County Road seventeen and, and seventy-six to the west of the roundabout. That's be more of a mixed-use arterial. What we're showing is, is what those street typologies give you for maximum spacing standards. Where you'd put intersection controls such as a roundabout or a traffic signal. So you don't just want to build a roundabout if it's not needed. It's, it's very similar to a traffic signal. You want to wait until you have enough vehicles. Utilizing that intersection where you warrant some type of intersection control. So this is just really showing the maximum of what you would use. If you got to the, to the type of traffic volumes and you had full build-out and you determined that you, this much intersection control was needed. I would like to add that, you know, the mobility of roundabouts works very well, traffic just keeps moving with them. We have shown and identified ways within the plan, kind of a myth-buster. Some people think roundabouts aren't pedestrian-friendly. But they actually can be designed to be very pedestrian-friendly and we, we put some pictures of that within the comp plan. For best design guidelines for pedestrian crossings at roundabout. And again, construct only as needed. As part of the seventy-sixth Avenue South corridor study that MetroCog is currently working on with Stan Tech. We are looking at two alternatives for the corridor through this area. One of them shows this level of roundabouts in the same access. And another one is looking at a different intersection control typology that would be something different than a roundabout. And then different from a traffic signal because they don't work, because the signals and roundabouts don't work well together. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Peggy. In addition to looking at transportation recommendations and land use recommendations, the plan also outlines opportunities for green space development and trail development. So we've identified in addition to some of these other considerations, some opportunities where pedestrian trails could be introduced alongside roadways. And as Peggy was walking through some of the design standards that have been identified for the design of these roadways. There are a lot of opportunities for developing pedestrian trails and sidewalks alongside these transportation improvements. So there are a number of opportunities to, to develop and include these pedestrian improvements as infrastructure is improved throughout the community. Next slide, please. Oh. There we go, thank you. In addition to, to trails, we also looked at a number of key locations for where parks and green space opportunities could be developed. In conjunction with neighborhood development. Certainly Horus is experiencing a lot of growth east of County Highway seventeen. So as Phil mentioned earlier, a number of green spaces have identified as opportunities for park development, neighborhood park development in the future. We also did an overall assessment of green space opportunities and we have identified within the plan. Where priority park improvements should be emphasized, certainly as plaits and redevelopment plans are being considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Next slide, please. And in addition to some of these green space features within neighborhood redevelopment. There are also opportunities to develop natural features and drainage features to support pedestrian trails as well as open space amenities. One of which is County Drain twenty-seven. It's important to note that this is an opportunity to develop pedestrian trails. That can help provide another level of connectivity to the surrounding trails throughout the region. And it is a natural choice for a lot of developments to locate some green space amenities within drainage structures like this. To take advantage of some of the natural features around the area. Next slide, please. As Phil mentioned, within the small area plans, we have identified a number of small of, excuse me, of neighborhood. Green space opportunities and community green space opportunities that can be developed. These open spaces have been identified in, in areas that are easily accessible and are at key locations to support not only residential. Development, but also some of the important commercial development considerations. Next slide. We have these green spaces within the plan categorized into three different classifications to help provide some programming. Direction as you think about how these green spaces should be developed. The first of these classifications is what we're calling a town square park. This is your smallest of green spaces. And it's typically classified as, as parcels, less than an acre in size or around an acre in, in size at maximum. We have two, or we have one location where we've identified. We have two, or we have one location where we've identified where a town square park could be located. And that is at the that location of Center Avenue and Main Street in near Old Town Horace or what we're calling Old Town Horace within the small area plan. When we think about what a town square park might look like, we're thinking of an urban environment or what you might find on a main street, a smaller gathering space that's uniquely programmed to support activities in the winter such as a skating rink, holiday light displays, holiday lighting ceremonies, things of that sort. And in the warmer months, it could be a place where you could host movies on the lawn or food truck festivals, places that were, excuse me, events that will really develop a keen sense of place and a unique sense of place. Parks, or excuse me, some of the other amenities within the town square park could be movable seating, restaurant spaces, some lawn spaces, interactive features such as splash pads, and also public art. Next slide, please. The next classification of parks that we've identified is what we're calling small neighborhood parks. This is sort of that that next level up in size, typically in size of one to three acres. We have two specific locations within the comprehensive plan that have identified key locations where these neighborhood parks could be located. When we think about neighborhood parks and programming of these spaces, they still have a little bit of a specialty lean to them, not quite as specialized as a town square park, but definitely, you know, considering some of the uses that surrounding neighborhoods might find of interest within these spaces. When we visited with residents throughout our community engagement exercises, we heard from a lot of residents that there's significant interest in having a dog park somewhere in Horace. A small neighborhood park would be a specific place or a keen opportunity where you could have a dog park would be a great utilization of a space such as this. These small neighborhood parks would also be located in direct in direct relation to biking and walking trails so that it's easy to access these small neighborhood parks for many different neighborhoods throughout the communities. When we think about additional programming opportunities for small neighborhood parks, we can also think about non-traditional playgrounds, what we're calling our natural play features that have that are a little bit different than the brightly colored playgrounds that you would see at a typical park in your community, something that would really create a key area of interest or something that's a little bit more unique than what you would find in other areas. Next slide, please. Our next level up is our largest size of park that we've classified for programming purposes is what we're calling community parks. Again, we have two larger areas that we've designated as larger community parks, and these are parks in size of three to five acres or even larger. And when we think about larger community parks, oftentimes community parks can be located in conjunction with educational facilities. So when we think about the new construction of the high school and the the ballparks and or the ballfields and the soccer fields that are going to be developed in conjunction with those facilities, those are the types of opportunities where you can co-locate larger-sized community parks to serve the broader community. And these types of scenarios, you have larger lawn spaces. You've got a number of sports courts that can be co-located together, such as tennis courts, basketball courts, softball fields, baseball fields, soccer fields, things of that sorts. And these are also typically located in proximity to walking and biking trails. Oftentimes, they'll have on-street parking, and they could also have some specialty programmatic elements such as handball and pickleball, as those are also programmatic features that are becoming increasingly popular with residents throughout the region. Next slide, please. Finally, within the comprehensive plan, you'll note that there are a number of strategies that we've identified for implementation. As Phil and Peggy and I have described to you this described to you this evening, there's a lot of information that we cover. And what we've done to help provide you at the city tools to help implement the plan is an implementation matrix with key strategies that you can think about and that you can evaluate on a case-by-case basis and on an annual basis to see how this plan continues to align with your goals and strategies as a community. Really, this implementation table is what we recommend you consider as you try to implement the plan and as you work with your local stakeholders. And we really recommend that you evaluate the implementation policies and strategies, again, on an annual basis as your your needs evolve and as the feedback that you hear from residents evolves. Within this implementation strategy within the documents or this this matrix that you see, we've identified within this matrix who can help champion some of these goals and policies and how these might line up within your short, mid, long-term goals and ongoing goals that you encounter as a city. Next slide, please. So just to recap this evening, our milestones for completion, we have, we presented to the community and to the study review committee back in February, our draft plan. We received a number of comments for final edits, which we incorporated into that draft plan. We then reissued the final plan for public comment period, which was open for March ninth through March twentieth. We also presented the final draft plan to the Horse Park Board on March twenty-third, so they have had an opportunity to weigh in on our recommendations. Between March twenty-third and the beginning of May, we incorporated all of the final edits from the city and from the public review process into the final draft that you see here this evening. And we presented to the Horse Planning Commission last Tuesday evening our final recommendations for the plan, of which they have recommended their approval to you all as a city council here this evening. So with that, we will open it up for questions that you might have of us, the team, both Phil and Peggy and I, as we've been working on this plan over the past several months. Thank you for your time.
There we go. Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I would like to, you know, if there's any any public comments, who's will open up the public hearing here too. Just to sorry, if anybody wants to kind of have any questions on this as well.
All right, I am monitoring the Q and A area and an individual did put in, do we plan to put in a safe walkway for kids west of Cheyenne along Seventy-Sixth Avenue to be able to get to the new schools safely as we have done further south of Cheyenne? Right now, it is a little bit scary to ride a bike on Seventy-Sixth Avenue. So I think the plan reference that is the types of roads are improved, pedestrian walkways and all those types of things are taken into consideration with any of the improvements we do, correct?
Correct.
Yes. Okay.
Maybe add a little bit to that, too. If you look at the bicycle and pedestrian facility recommendations several slides back, what we looked at is we looked at some of the other planning documents done in the area. MetroCog does a bicycle plan update every five years, and it does show that as a long-term facility. I am not certain whether or not that's been programmed or not yet, but it has been identified as a long-term facility.
Okay. All right. Any other council members have any questions that you'd like to ask right now?
One question, this is Brian. So one question is related to the the current or the the plan, either Cass County roadway improvements that are that are either in process or Fargo roadway construction that are planned. Does this does this comprehensive plan take into consideration any of those current or near-term upgrades that are planned in in our general area that we might be connecting to?
For this question, I'm going to defer to to Peggy Harder, who did lead the transportation assessment of this, and also to Adam Altenberg from MetroCog, who is also on the line.
Yes, we were able to coordinate very well with the county and MetroCog, particularly if you're talking more specifically about Seventy-Sixth Avenue South as it goes to the east. Because STANTEC is also working on the Seventy-Sixth Avenue South corridor study, you know, understanding that the county is looking at upgrading the roadway of Seventy-Sixth Avenue, basically east of where your city's project left off this year in twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two. And there's there's discussions on, you know, Fargo potentially making that connection on Forty-Fifth Street. That wasn't worked into this plan because that's still under discussion as far as I'm aware. I know Adam from MetroCog is on the line, and I don't know if he has any further updates on on the extension of Forty-Fifth Street to the south. But we did identify that in this plan that, you know, one of the most important transportation things that the city of Horace needs is an additional way to, you know, enter and exit the city and knowing that, you know, that's a little bit out of the city's control because it falls under other governing jurisdictions. So we have been having those conversations of coordination. Adam, did you?
The only thing I can add is I did share this plan with Tom Susie, Assistant Engineer with Cass County here last week, too. Just to so so that he could, he could check it with regard to the county roads that that go through the city.
I'm having a really hard time hearing you, Adam.
Yep, you're in the weeds.
I apologize for that. What what I said is I did share this plan with Tom Susie, Assistant Engineer with Cass County last week, just just so that he could, he could look at the plan and compare it with what the county has programmed with with regard to the county roads that go through the city.
Okay.
And another thing that we did look at is we looked at the long-range traffic projections that MetroCog just completed as as part of their metropolitan transportation plan. And that includes, you know, all program projects out to the year twenty forty-five to ensure that, you know, what we're recommending specifically on those major arterial roadways can definitely handle those future traffic volumes with, you know, improvements that Cass County and the city of Fargo and other jurisdictions in the area would be undertaking.
Right. I mean, as as we experienced with the with the construction on, you know, the intersection of Seventy-Sixth Avenue and County Seventeen this last summer, we it is, it is really important for us to get an alternative north-south, you know, arterial collector road that we can use to to get, you know, into West Fargo or Fargo. You know, obviously, One Hundredth Avenue is the alternate route, but having that that additional, you know, collector road is going to be really important in the plan. So, and thank you.
All right. Anybody else have any other questions? I guess I'll throw one out there, kind of follow up to Brian's. So maybe I missed it on here, but I know at one point in time that the the county had talked about expanding out Highway One Hundred, possibly making it more of a larger roadway. Was any of that discussed when we, when this got brought up or when we talked about the comprehensive plan? Kind of work with that? I don't know, maybe that's not on the table anymore, but I know about a year or so ago that had gotten brought up.
No, that was actually brought up during our Seventy-Sixth Avenue South corridor study discussions just like about a month ago, the county was talking. MetroCog has a plan that looked at different options for really, you know, what might be an alternative traffic route, alternative traffic mover. And, you know, at that time, that plan was called the Traffic Operations Incident Management Study was kind of teetering between Seventy-Sixth and One Hundredth Avenue South. What I from the county about a month ago is they were feeling like One Hundredth Avenue South would be that better, you know, future reliever connection. However, there's nothing programmed in place for that. It's just, I think, what they're leaning towards.
Okay. Yeah, it's kind of like a bookmark, I think, because I know they were, you know, they were at one point, we're talking about a bypass. And I know that long, I don't say a long time ago, but four or five years ago, I know there were still some conversations about using Seventy-Sixth as a bypass on the south metro. But I think I heard one time, too, that it was Forty-Sixth was actually considered as a bypass and go up Kendrick Road. So, you know, it's, I know that's probably going to change as the as the dynamics progress here, but I just was curious as to whether that had gotten brought up for One Hundred or not, because I know that had been discussed prior, probably a couple of years ago, if I remember right. But anyway, okay, thank you. Anybody else got any questions? Anthony, I'm probably going to close the public hearing. I'm not seeing any more on that.
Thank you for the presentation.
Yeah, thank you, guys. I appreciate that. That was, I mean, it's a, it's a good read. I know at the end there, when we started looking at the recommendations, that was a pretty good list that we were we were looking at. And, you know, I think I appreciate you guys bettering that out for us because it's just, you know, there's an awful lot of things in play.
Well, thank you for letting us be a part of this study. I know we've certainly found the process interesting, and we've enjoyed working with everyone who's been involved. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor and Council, I told the planning commission this as well. What you've got here, I think, is a very interesting plan. You know, when I started to get involved, it was clear that Horace wanted something that wasn't just typical planning and just let kind of the developers come in and do whatever they wanted to do, but really, the community wanted to shape its future character. And so this plan reflects that. As I noted, it's got some very specific design standards and expectations. So if if the city can develop according to the plan, I think you'll have a very interesting, interesting place here.
And I would concur that that's kind of when I read through this, too, that that reflects what we had discussed early on, you know, that we're, if this isn't going to be just your normal comprehensive plan with just the cookie cutter stuff, because we don't want that. And then I think as we look through this plan here, too, that's 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 reflected as well. So like I said, I appreciate that.
And if I can add to that, our our work is done here. So now, now the the buck stops with you folks over the next year and five years and ten years and twenty years to make sure that that those things happen.
Yeah, but this is the good part, that we've got an updated roadmap to work with now and not one that's, well, it was probably expired probably eight years ago. There were some things in there, obviously, that that were incorporated in here, too, but things changed so rapidly that that was fairly quickly. What do you want to say? It's just it it outlived its usefulness, let's put it that way. So. Okay, anybody else got anything that they want to say or comment on here?
I just wanted to thank STANTEC again. I think they did a really wonderful job. And, you know, the short time periods that I've been here, they've been really great to work with. And I think they made a really excellent plan. I'm really excited about this plan, and I think it's going to be a great tool to use going forward.
Agreed.
Thanks.
No, I think you as well. Like I said, I appreciate what you, the effort that has gone into this. And I know it was, it was kind of a slog for a while there, but we got through it. And I think we've got a very nice, nice path to work with here, so I appreciate that. So with that, then, I'm going to need a motion from someone to accept the comprehensive plan.
Chelsea, I'll make a motion.
Yeah, Chelsea, they get a second?
I'll say it.
Who was that? I couldn't see.
Brian, Brian.
Got it, okay. All right, so all in favor, say hi.
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 That was everyone, so it was unanimous. All right, that passes. All right, thanks again, guys. I appreciate it.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
As as a side note, this is something that is interesting. We we, one of our goals that we had put in place when we first got elected in two thousand sixteen was to get this updated comprehensive plan. So this is, this is a long time coming. This has been a strategic goal for us to to achieve and get something adopted. So I think this is a big compliment. Thank you for your help.
Absolutely.
Thank you guys for the opportunity.
So with that, let us move on to number nine, then. Barrett, you've got this one, too.
Thank you. What you have before you, it's just a housekeeping item. Now that we have adopted the new comprehensive plan, we have to update the zoning ordinance to update the language to reflect that it's no longer the twenty twenty-eight city of Horace comprehensive plan. So basically, we've made edits to all of chapter four to update the language so that we'll be referencing this document in the future rather than twenty twenty-eight comprehensive plan.
Okay, if you want to just go through that, then Barrett, quickly, just kind of get an overview of what we're, what this is about, so the folks know.
Yeah, this wasn't a really exciting item. I didn't really have a lot of visuals to show. Basically, it took the whole chapter, wherever it stated the city of Horace twenty twenty-eight plan and got replaced with the language stating the most current comprehensive plan.
So you just, you, so this is the draft edited document, essentially?
Correct, yeah.
Is it, so it reflects the new plan and all of that?
The resolution is a chance.
Updating all the references. Okay.
Anybody have any questions on that? I mean, this, this is kind of just a procedural thing to get our, get our documents updated now that we've approved the comp plan, so.
Mr. Mayor, this is Lucas. This will have a public hearing for.
Mr. Mayor, this is Lucas. Uh, this will have a public hearing for it.
Agreed.
Because it went in front of the planning commission. Uh, so any ordinances that go in front of them have, uh, public hearings tied to them.
Okay, yep. Um, all right, so we'll open up the public hearing. Uh, if anybody's got any questions, go ahead and type them in or. On this, but again, this is more of a housekeeping.
They can put them in the Q and A if they have any questions.
But the council members either to have any questions too. Feel free. Okay. All right, if there are no more questions or anything, I will close the public hearing. Unless anybody has any other questions or comments from the council here, I'm going to accept a motion on this one, guys and gals.
So we'll do accept the resolution as prepared by Barrett.
Okay, Dave makes a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Chelsea, you got that one? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, and the motion carries. All right, we'll move on to number 10. Uh, Jim, you've got that one?
I do, but after, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. What I'm going to talk with you tonight about is a preliminary engineering report and a water study that was prepared by Interstate Engineering. I have Kent in the office with me six feet apart. Damon's on the, uh, video conference and Mike Furtz on the video conference, so we're going to. Push this off on four people, so, um. This has kind of been a long time coming. We have discussed or we've gone over the water quality analysis improvements, water treatment plant analysis improvements. Our storage analysis and improvements, water capacity analysis and improvements. So. With you tonight, I'm going to talk about the service area, the population, existing system and the future needs. Damon and Kent will be talking to you about the alternatives and timelines for those alternatives. So, next slide, Brian, please. Purpose of this report was to provide the city with options and cost alternatives to supply a safe, reliable, cost effective, high quality bottled water supply to its residents. I do apologize, this is a very wordy PowerPoint presentation. There's just not a lot of fun stuff that goes into a study of this nature, so. Bear, bear with us here. Uh, first thing we have here is the water service area. We see that light blue transparent area. That is the area that the city of Horace provides water to. Anything outside of that is Casper or water users. Anything inside that is city of Horace. Next slide, Brian. Water service area, like I said, is defined in an agreement between Casper water users and the city of Horace. Consists of approximately 1,150 acres, 400 acres of which is currently developed and 750 acres which is currently undeveloped. Next slide, please, Brian. All these numbers are based on the Horace comprehensive plan. 750 acres of undeveloped land equals 400 residential, 225 zone, commercial, light industrial or industrial. And 125 acres for public facilities. Next slide. Population and estimates. Well, current estimate is at 5,145 people based on water usage. This can't go on city population because of the service areas differences. So based on water use, there's 473 users, 3.27 persons per user and 26 commercial accounts. Next slide, Brian, please. Projection of the estimated population is 4,400 acres undeveloped residential lot size of a little bit over a quarter of an acre. And back to that 3.2 persons per. Next slide, please. The existing system, existing water supply, Horace gets water from the West Fargo aquifer. City has rights to 160 acre feet or 52.1 million gallons per year. Next slide. Recently, city installed remote re-water meters to accurately come for the water usage. Prior to that, water usage was reported on a. Honor system or the city would bill for a maximum of 10,000 gallons. It didn't account for actual gallons produced and actual gallons used. It was just, like I said, an honor system. Or you reported your meter in there. This is a lot more accurate. Next slide, Brian. Water wells, the city has two existing water wells close together with similar water quality. Well, number one is on the south side of, uh, Park Drive. It was installed in October 2013. It's 189 feet deep. 350 gallon per minute pump. Well, number two is on the north side of Park Drive. It was installed in November of 2013. Only 170, 47 feet deep with the same 350 gallon per minute pump. One thing to note of this is the current plant is only rated for 240 gallons a minute. So we'll talk about that when we get to the water treatment. Water treatment plant was constructed in 2003, designed to treat 240 gallons per minute. So right now pumps are pumping, then they're off. They're pumping, then they're off. There is no variable, or VFD, to control the pumping rate. It's either an on or an off type of situation, so. Uh, the plant produces approximately 42.9 millions of gallons, million gallons of treated water annually. Next slide, please. Your treatment process is very minimal. It's gas chlorination for disinfectant phosphate for a sequestering agent. That keeps the iron, keeps the iron, uh, suspended. In, in the water and Claritas 101, which is just to reduce any buildup and scaling within the, within the mains and distribution system. Claritas was added not too long ago into the process, so. reduces scaling buildup and mixtures. Next slide, please, Brian. Water storage, the elevated water storage reservoir was constructed in 1982. 75,000 gallon storage capacity. The ta, the tower is in all right shape. We're all right condition. There just need to be some modifications made to the, uh. Uh, safety lathering around, safety ladders around it and then some coating on the inside. Slide, please. There are 499 services as of November 2019, 473 residential, 26 commercial. If you go look at the records right now, it'll probably be more, it's just evidence of how quickly Horace is growing and how fast you're adding users onto the system. Next slide, Brian. Uh, there's approximately 44,000 linear feet of piping ranging from four inch to eight inch pipe. There is transi-pipe, asbestos cement and PVC pipe material at approximately 4,000 feet of four inch. Next slide, please. So the future needs based on the projected population of 5,500 people within the service area, the city's water source. You just flip through all these, the supply, the treatment, the distribution, storage facilities are all going to be inadequate. None of it is up to where it needs to be for your future goals, so. Um, in the future, the city would need a water source capable of producing 200.75 million gallons of water per year and currently. Click the button, Brian. You have rights to 52.1. I'll turn it over to Damon and Kent's here with me to talk about the alternatives that we've gone through and, um. Then we will take some, go through a projected timeline and then take some questions.
Thanks, Jim. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Um, we looked at several different alter, alternatives for this. Um, you could utilize the existing water treatment system and then you could purchase the balance of the water as Jim showed earlier. You know, at your ultimate build out, you would need 200.75 million gallons of water. You have 52.1 million gallons. For an allotment right now, so you would have to purchase that additional water from either Casper Water District or the City of Fargo. So, next slide, Brian. Um, alternative number two would be to construct a new water treatment plant. You would tear down your old one and construct a new one. And that would fully utilize your current appropriation of 52.1 million gallons of water. And then you again would purchase the balance from either Casper or the City of Fargo. Okay, the capital cost of that, uh, alternative to build a new water treatment plant is 3.8 million dollars. Uh, alternative number two B, that was to rehabilitate your existing water plant. So we would add on to your existing water treatment plant on the same lot that's there. Um, and that would treat your 52.1 million gallons appropriation and then you would. Again, purchase the balance when you get to that, you get over your allotment of 52.1 million gallons from either Casper Water or the City of Fargo. The capital cost to build that rehabilitation or add on to your existing water treatment plant would be approximately 1.45 million dollars. Uh, alternative number three would be to purchase all of your water for the service area from Casper Water Users. Uh, you could then decommission the current water treatment plant. The capital cost for that would be approximately $300,000 to purchase your water from Casper. Uh, when we did the plans for 81st and 63rd up there, actually it's 81st. There is a provision in there for future to be able to build that vault, that meter vault to hook up Casper to the city. Of Horace's water system at that location. It was taken out of those plans. Because it was such a small assessment area that it could be a future, future item, uh, to do that, so. But that would be a vault and meter pit in that area, so. And then alternative number four would be to purchase all of your water in the study area from the City of Fargo. Again, you would decommission your existing water treatment plant. The capital cost to do that would be approximately 3.6 million dollars. That would be getting a line out of, out to Horace. Okay, next slide, Brian. Thank you. Uh, the city of Horace, I guess our recommendation for this would be the city of Horace should upgrade its infrastructure to fully utilize your 52.1 million gallon water appropriation. From the West Fargo Aquifer. Then you could purchase the balance of the water from an outside area such as either Casper Water District. That was our recommendation. Um, this recommendation is also discussed further in detail and alternatives two A and two B, which we'll see here later on. Click again, Brian. And one thing about this recommendation that we're giving you guys is this recommendation allows the city to control its water treatment. By utilizing your maximum water allotment from the West Fargo Aquifer. You can also control your rates and also provide an opportunity for redundancy in your system. Um, say something happened with like what's going on with the COVID right now and something, if you purchased all your water from. Casper or from the City of Fargo, if you do this alternative and still maintain your system. If something happened to Casper or City of Fargo, you still have the opportunity with your system in place. To be able to supply that drinking water to your residents. Um, if you were totally reliant on Casper or City of Fargo and something happened to their system, you guys are without water. So that's our recommendation for, you know, keeping your existing, um, system in place, upgrading it. And then also buying your future needs from Casper and from City of Fargo or City of Fargo. So, next slide, Brian. Um, just going to a little more detail or analysis of the alternatives. Alternative number two A, that remember got, and that was the new water plant. So you'd tear down your old one, build a new water treatment plant. The advantage to that is the city of Horace would get water quality softer than Casper users. Um, more comparable to the city of Fargo's water. Uh, it would reduce the need for individual water softeners dependent on the user preference. Um, the disadvantage of that would be, it would be estimated to be between 5.25 and $6 per thousand gallons. Including maintenance and operation costs. It is a higher cost alternative, the highest of them. And that is just the cost to produce your water would be that 5.25 to $6 per thousand gallons. So. Next slide, Brian. Uh, alternative number two B, that was to rehabilitate and add on to your existing water treatment plant. The advantage of that is the city of, of Horace, the water quality would be the same as what Casper Water Users' water quality is. Um, you get rid of the discoloration and the scaling, uh, the hardness would still be the same as what Casper's is. You know, you'd still need individual softeners, uh, preference of the person that's using those, so. Uh, the cost was estimated between 3.25 and 3.60 per thousand gallons. As you can see, it's quite a bit cheaper. Than alternative two A, which is a brand new water treatment plant. Uh, that 3.25 to 3.60 includes operation and maintenance costs. So that's just to produce your water. Brian, next slide. Again, alternative three would be to purchase all of your water from Casper Water District. Um, the advantage to that is the city of Horace would get water from Casper. Your discoloration and scaling that you have right now would go down. The hardness would be the same. Pretty similar to what you have right now in your system. So disadvantage is the hardest one change. The water quality would be similar to what alternative two A is if you built your own treatment plant similar. To what Casper treats is, which would be green sand filters. Um, you would still need, um, individual softeners for houses. Uh, you would have no control over your bulk rate. You would be at, um, the discretion of Casper Water. So whatever they would change it to each year or every other year, that's what you would be subject to. Currently, they are at 4.25 per thousand gallons for their cost. Uh, the estimated cost for this alternative would, for producing your water would be between 4.60 and 4.70 per thousand gallons. And that includes the operation and maintenance costs. So, next one, Brian. And then alternative number four, if you purchase water from the City of Fargo. The advantage is the city of Horace would get water, uh, from Fargo. Uh, your hardness would be reduced. It's a better quality water. Uh, so you would not need softeners in your houses. Disadvantage is you have, again, no control over what your bulk rate costs would be. You would be at the, at the discretion of the City of Fargo. Um, so if they change it yearly or every other year, that's what you're at. Uh, currently they are at 3.25 per thousand gallons, so. And then again, your estimated cost to produce water then would be between 4.50 and 4.70 per thousand gallons, which includes operation and maintenance of costs, so. Uh, potential timelines. Alternative number two A, which would be the, uh, whole new water treatment plant. Uh, we could secure funding, uh, the summer fall of this year, 2020. Uh, do our design over the winter of 2020, 2021. Get the project in the spring of 2021, start construction then. The plant would most likely be online by the spring of 2022, so. Okay, go ahead, Brian. Alternative two B, which is the rehab to your existing facility. Again, we could secure funding this summer and fall of 2020. Do the design over the winter here and then start construction in the spring of 2021. When the plant would again go online, probably the spring of 2022. Okay, Brian. Alternative number three, which would be go to Casper Water. Um, would be construction timeline where you could install that meter vault near 63rd and 81st like we had planned in our 81st. Uh, design there. That could be done the fall, winter for design of 2020. Start construction in 2021 and it would be online in the summer of 2021. So you could be getting Casper Water in the summer of 2021 in the city of, of Horace. Little quicker timeline than building a water treatment plant, so should be one more click, Brian. Um, alternative number four, uh, that would be hooking up to the City of Fargo. Uh, that, that would again would require installing a meter vault and water mains to get the water from Fargo out to the City of Horace. The design of that would be done in 2020. Start construction in the spring of 2021. And it could possibly be online the fall of 2021. Okay, next one. Okay, with that, we'll turn it over and any questions that you guys might have, please fire away.
We realize this is a lot of information to get. But it's something that was important to get out to the city council to start the discussion. We've been talking about this since. Late in 2018, early 2019, and there's been just a lot of variables that have been going through and a lot of things in flux, so. Need to get it back before you guys for discussion, get some opinions. We've been working with the mayor and Mr. Schmidt, Councilman Schmidt on, uh. On throughout this process and just getting it out for the rest of the city council, um, your opinions and your review, your views, so.
Yes, one question I had that I was, I don't, don't remember, uh, looking at the number quite that way, but. Uh, the difference between what we could is so if we maintain our water rights, uh, that we have in the aquifer. Uh, we keep, we keep those water rights to deliver, you know, up to 52 million gallons. Um, and we would purchase, uh, the balance, you know, as we continue to grow, purchase the balance from. Uh, from casual water, which would be one option. Uh, do they have the capacity to be able to, or at least would, would we have to work with them to. Increase that capacity to supply that water or do they have that capacity today?
So with their construction of their 1 million gallon tank up by the new schools, they've indicated that they have capacity today for the growth. And once the growth, once the growth is out. Roll in that tower, they will look at installing another one towards the south, south end of, of, uh, the city of Horace closer to the 100th Avenue area.
And, and at this point, there's really no option to request additional water. And, and at this point, there's really no option to request additional water rights from that aquifer. Given that, you know, West Fargo has given up their water rights for pulling from that aquifer. Is there any chance that rather than us having to purchase from. Was, you know, cash roll, could we increase our rates to fulfill more or produce more for those residents?
It, it certainly could be done and it's a discussion to be had now that West Fargo was outside of that aquifer, that aquifer is regenerating. When we did talk to the state water commission in the past, they said that it's regenerating, just not very quickly, but with West Fargo pulling out, not pulling out anymore. It's not going down as quickly as it was. So that is definitely an avenue that you could pursue to get more raw water rights.
Potential is there is the point, so.
The potential is there, yes.
Whether they would give you the water rates out to your ultimate build out, Brian. We don't know. You could ask for maybe half of that or something and then what they'll do is if they, if they. Say that that's okay, they'll send something back to the city. For the city to send out to residents that would be affected in the area for that additional appropriation. So the city would have to send out certified letters and things like that.
So is there, is there, you know, from the, from the state or that the health department or any of the. The entities that we've been working with the state was water commission. Did they typically recommend, you know, rehabilitating or upgrading current facilities versus. You know, just connecting to a regional. I, I mean, what are, what are our communities doing in this similar situation?
Kent, you want to take that one?
Well, the reasoning but of, the reason of going to a new water to plan would be to get the soft water. With rehabilitating, you'd be staying with your same, pretty much your same water quality or upgrading it to what Cass rural is. But. If you wanted to get softer water, you'd have to go new plant.
Well, I mean, just thinking from the standpoint of, of there's two, two parts of that. One is to what level of quality do we want the water? And the other part of that is. What, what is, you know, if we said, all right, we want the best quality water. I mean, we could. Design for reverse osmosis system if we wanted to, but you're less likely to get state level funding. To be able to get that quality. Is, is that going to be an issue if we say we want to replace the, the treatment plant to get the best quality water we can? For the reasonable price and oh, by the way, we, you know, this still qualifies to get some significant, you know, funding from the state level to offset the cost.
The, the two A plant is an ion. Exchange plant, which is a newer deal than reverse osmosis. It gets you around the same quality of water.
Okay.
Well, I mean, we could have looked at reverse osmosis. I don't think the cost difference would be much difference. In fact, if you ever wanted to go on, we'd probably look at both as we go on, but. The ion exchange should get your water quality down to as good as Fargo.
So my, I guess my, my question, I appreciate that. That's, it's good to know. That doesn't hurt our opportunity for getting additional funding from the state. Wanting that higher quality water versus, you know, going back to the same quality water that, that casual produces.
It's a crap shoot on what they fund. I mean, I can tell. They like the best quality water you can get out there.
Right.
You know. Most of your residents are going to save money by not going with a softener or softener. If you look up. They're about seven fifty to fifteen dollars a month average to run them. So they can save all, you can save all that money for your residents and you put it, you know, towards monthly fee. So.
Right.
It's a balance on how, how you present that to the state. And kind of if you ever got into the design phase, you would have some public meetings to, to feel that out. So you could put that in a graph.
Well, I just, I just, it's probably my number one complaint or resident feedback that I get is our quality water. And anything we do to improve the quarter, improve the quality. So that people aren't losing appliances or losing fixtures of their house because the water, you know, scaling and. And causing other issues with their, you know, clothing and, you know, dishwasher and, and laundry. You know, all those things are affected by the water quality. So, I mean, I, for a little bit more money, I think there's, I think we'd get. General support for saying let's, that just get the best quality water we can. If we're gonna, if we're gonna move that direction to, you know, replace or upgrade.
But your statement there is any of those options will do that though, Brian. Can't, we can't just make a statement that only one of them or, or our own facility. Will do that. I, I want to remember that when we talked about this water study, we're only talking about half of the current city. There is a other portion that does not have city water and is on casual water. So for us to make the statement that. We're being held hostage by casual water. Well, you're already talking about half of our citizens right now. So something happens to casual water. Yes, half of our city goes out with what, without water. So I, I guess I really have a concern that we're making this kind of investment when there is a, is a, is a. It's a group or a, a industry, a, a rural water district out there that's built to do this and already services half of our city. That we need to keep having this, this, our own facility that we have to maintain. And I, I guess I had a question about the cost. When you say, can you go back to each of those analysis real quick? So when Damon, when you said it had, so like this example, you're, you're showing any of these, I guess. When you say your cost, the initial upfront for say the to be was, what was it? One point something million, one point four five. So is the estimated cost of that per gallon include that one point four five? Are you just saying? The one point four five is something we have to put our money into. And then the cost of operating and running that new facility would increase our water cost by three dollars or whichever or. Per thousand gallon.
Kent, you want to take that one?
Yeah, what that cost is, is to pay off any of the construction cost.
Okay.
Money cost over thirty years at two percent.
Okay, all right.
Capital cost and your cost of.
And our cost operator. Okay, all right. That, that makes sense. Thank you.
So the first two, I got like two dollars a thousand just for cost of operating, cost to make water. That's just your electricity stuff. When you get down to the buying it from the Fargo water. I, I left a dime in there for operating costs.
Sure.
When you were talking about, yeah, summer in Cass rural part of your deal. But those people actually can go to the annual meeting and. And elect people to represent them.
Yep.
Where when you buy bulk, you don't have that. You can call the board and stuff, but you don't get a vote.
Well, but I guess that, that, when we state that and we make that connotation that we state, we're, we're, we're hedging that. Some, that casserole is gonna do something poor to us. That, that's my concern is that right out of the gate, we're saying, yes, we don't have representation, but. As an individual water user, do I really have that much, much representation? I mean, casserole water has to provide water to a very large area. And it's in their best interest to, to do things. I mean, and even the new development that's going up where the school being all of those, they're going to be serviced by casual water. I guess I just, it's a huge investment that we're making that we have a company, you know, that's right, right around us. But I mean. I'll go by with what Brian says. You're gonna have to ask the, the users in our city of what they're willing to pay for. And I agree with Brian. They're not happy with the water calling. We need to increase it. But they should make the understanding that their water rates are going to go up and become very similar to price to casual water or even to Fargo or. Or wherever they're, we're all going to start getting in that same cost per thing. I did have another question. Um, do we know yet on average, how much water we're using per year? In comparison to our allotment? Brian, do we have, is it, are we close yet or we?
The last, the last, not, not twenty nineteen. I don't know if we have the number Brent for twenty nineteen, but. Last hour we were, we were using was forty two million gallons a year.
So we're already close to our level. Now. Just this piece here, this analysis just clarifies getting the water improved in terms of at the source. Is there still another cost to our citizens that we're going to have to have to either. Replace existing water lines, clean water lines, whatever that is, right? That's a whole nother cost that's going to come into play, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, and we, and we don't have a knowledge of that yet, but that would be something we'd have to start analyzing as well. In terms of that could affect our cost of, of water delivery as well. No matter what, no matter what option we take, that will affect our cost of water delivery in the older parts of. In the current parts of our service area in Horace, correct?
Correct. Those, those areas where you have four inch lines, those should probably be upgraded.
Bigger and that kind of stuff. Okay. All right. So that is another cost. We have to just take into consideration that would affect. Water rates in the future if we were to improve that. So.
But so you, you're right, that would affect the rates. But on the other hand, any of these options, we would have to.
We'd have to do that. That's what I'm saying. Yes.
That's a, that's a cost that's going to lift all.
Separate. Yeah, that's a separate.
It has to be done for any of them.
Correct. Agreed, agreed. I just want to make sure we're seeing this, though, or talking to that, that there is still an additional cost to improve. Water lines, independent of whatever option we choose.
Right.
Right. Go ahead, Dave.
Well, I was just gonna state, my, my opinion is, I, I don't care for the options to A or to B. I would prefer we go with casual water, but. I am not one of the users in that area. So to me, it would go more to the public that uses the water and which level they'd want to go to. To, to do this.
Right. I mean, cause it's the thing is too, you know, I don't know. We talked about this. Do we give up our water allocation? I mean, that's kind of what this is coming down to, Dave, is do we just switch the whole thing over to Cass rural and give up our water allocation?
Which I understand, but I don't have a water allocation even where I sit today. That, that's my side is that, is that. I, I'm still dependent on Cass to provide me water and I'm hoping that they do well to provide me water. Now, if they make a choice to provide Horace water and then they don't have the. Capacity, then yes, that's a challenge. But I just, I, I don't agree with taking the stance, the casual water, if we come to agreement would want to, you know. Do something negative to us, just to hedge a bet that that could happen. Spend either one million dollars or three million dollars for almost on it. So, but.
I'm hearing you're not a fan of option A or B.
I'm not.
I would tend to agree, but in no way, shape or form am I prepared to make any type of decision tonight.
Agreed.
Let's, I, I.
Right, we, we.
We've got to have some good discussion and, and I think we still gotta go back because one of the comments, you know, in. Option three and three or two C and D, her cost could go up purely, even if we were to do our own. The cost to go up purely as well.
Very true. Yes.
So I, I think we're. Dealing with, you know, a lot. And yeah, I think we, what is the outlook? It was talked a little bit early on about the capacity for gas rule. Are they going to be actually able to handle things? They're buying water from Fargo already. Is that still going to be something that's going to happen? For us.
Eventually, I think it probably will, John. Right now, the intent would be to service it all through their own system. Out of the million gallon tower at the intersection of seventeen and seventy sixth avenue. Yep. And that is not city of Fargo water. That is casual. So.
How would a Fargo water line come down here?
It would come down either veterans or forty fifth from the ground storage reservoir up by Deer Creek. They've got. A ground storage reservoir where we, there could be piping put in. Trick there is it has to go through casual water user service area as defined in that agreement.
Well, you know, we have a forty fifth street sewer line that's eventually going to need to come down here. How easy to do to put a water line. I, I just see it's going to end up being a combination. Of C and E. In the future, I, I think we have to work more than just water with this. When we talk with Fargo and Cass rural, there, there's a lot that goes with it.
I don't disagree with you, John, but that's why we're kind of throwing these options out here, trying to get an idea of what we're, what we're looking at too. Cause I was kind of curious. You know, bringing the water lines down here. Where do we hook in? You know, I think the assumption's always been, you know, with water and the sewer lines that we would hook in at our border with. Fargo if we went that route, you know, so at some point they'd have to bring the transmission lines down. But we're still dealing with the cast water area. So it's not just, you know, cut and dry deal here. There's going to have some. Conversations to take place about that.
Exactly.
That route.
Well, and we can't, we, we have to get a deal with whoever that doesn't change for the first couple of years.
Right.
And hook up and we, we've got to really hammer both casual or Fargo or both. To make sure we're, we're not being hammered.
Yep.
Year after year, that just, we, we can't do that to the people. It just doesn't work.
Right. You know, and the thing is that we talked about the water quality, you know, we could switch over and do casual water. We're still gonna have the hardness. You know, everybody's got that with the casual water. You have to have a softener. But you don't get the discoloration and the. As much scaling as you do with our city water. So it's just how much effort do we put into upscaling our plant? Do, you know, do we do that? Or do we just, like you said, switch the pin and everybody's on Cass rural? Yeah, I mean, that, that's what we have to kind of think about here as we look at this analysis, you know, what is in the best interest? Of everybody without having to, you know, open up the pocketbook twice or three times to pay for something like this. So.
This is Russ. May I ask a question?
Go.
Okay, should we hook up to Fargo? Does that mean we have to build a new water tower as well? Because we can't, we can't use rural cast rules for Fargo water.
I would say yes, Russ.
And, and we're talking about that too, Russ. You know, we need, we're probably at some point going to have to have another water tower. It's just whether it comes sooner than later. That, that's what this is coming down to.
And, and through all of.
If we just, if we just went with casual right now, there, there is a water tower in town that would suffice until. Whatever time it is that we need to build the other one, because I think that's always known is that there will be, have to be another. Tower in town. It's just a matter of when do we pull the pin and have to build it.
Our current water tower would be usable for Fargo and what is the life of that water tower?
It'll need rehabilit, it'll need a coating, interior and exterior and some safety improvements and a mixer in the near future to continue it. To continue using it, but that's a relatively inexpensive, couple hundred thousand dollars, three hundred thousand dollar project. It is on the intended use plan for funding if we would so choose to do it. So. With that, it can go on for quite a while, John, the life of the tower.
Isn't there a challenge of how, I mean, it, it. Being seventy five thousand gallons, how many times a day is that thing being filled, right? Is, is a design of a water term more to be. To provide, you know, pressure capacity, that type of stuff. And we're filling that thing multiple times a day, correct?
Correct. And it depends on the usage. It's a kind of a cliche answer, but the more you use, the more it fills. So.
Yeah.
In the summertime, they adjust the set levels to be different than in the wintertime, just to account for, a public works does, that is, to account for. Lawn watering and, and other uses of the waters.
Plus we need to, you know, the, another aspect of this is we need more storage to provide better. As, as a town continues to build out, we have to provide fire coverage.
Fire supply.
So fire coverage is, is another key element to the storage that. It is going to probably drive the next water tower faster than the, the volume of water that we're supplying and how many times we're refilling that tower.
Right. Oh, yeah. Ultimate build out, you'd need another million gallons of storage.
Well, Jim, you just said about three hundred thousand to do some re fab work on the inside of the water tower. I see a capital cost of three hundred grand to switch over and decommission it and go to casual.
Correct.
Yeah, to me. I mean, I'm simplifying it. I, I get that, but. And that's where I just think it's obsolete to look.
Well, that, that's, that's the thing. If, if we're looking to save money. Yes, the casual water is going to be the cheapest and fastest method for us to get higher quality water, but. We're in that process, we're getting up our water rates for our water treatment plant. So if, as long as we're okay with giving those rights up for now and evermore, then that's a strategy we can go towards.
Yep. And it's based on capital, but it's the water cost is where it's going to be more to go with Cass rural.
Yep, that's what I guess. Everybody's bill and Dave, I get it. I'm the same boat here, but the people that are in town here, the bills are going to go up. You know, not saying that they probably wouldn't anyway, once we get done implementing all this stuff, but it would be pretty much instantaneous and not a, not a drug process. So.
I mean. But once we build something, our costs are going to go up too. You've already shown it of either, either way. And then we have to operate one and then we have to do all this and we still have two separate service areas then that we're dealing with. So it's. It's.
I understand totally where you're coming from and I, I go, I know where John's at.
I have a question.
Chelsea, go ahead.
I kind of fell off there for a second, so I was trying to catch up, but. So if we went with Cass rural and Fargo grew down this way. I kind of fell off there for a second, so, um, I was trying to catch up, but, so if we went with casserole and Fargo grew down this way, then potentially would they not need to cross over casserole's boundary, and we could look at, um, more competitive bids or just switching over to Fargo in the future? And if we went with casserole now and they built the water tower for our needs, then would that keep us from ever going to Fargo in the future if we wanted to?
Casserole water has the, has the surface area that surrounds for us. If they were, where they source their water from would be the only change, if it comes from their system or comes from Fargo's system, it would still be going through casserole water system. You would never be direct with the City of Fargo in that such, that scenario, you would, it would be water through casserole system into the city from Fargo, so.
And then with the water tower, so casserole would probably end up building a water tower for us. Um, you know, potentially our rates would go up to pay for that anyways, but then that would be their water tower that we could, I mean, say we were having problems with them and we wanted to go to Fargo's water, but it's their water tower, so how, how would that work?
I'm sorry, Chelsea, I, I didn't catch all that, apparently they're weed whacking, mowing, and motorcycles out front here, so I'm having a heck of a time trying to hear some of it.
Well, I'm just talking about, so for like future, you know, what is the potential to switch everybody to Fargo? What, you know, if they built a water tower, that's their water tower, you know, just if, if there was problems with casserole.
Our, uh, casserole water users has done combined water towers, cost shares with local communities, done it with Fargo, they do it with Castleton, so it's something that they have done in the past and will look to do in the future. Preliminary, um, layouts show a new tower kind of in the Vista industrial, down on the corner of Seventeen and One Hundredth Avenue. That's where their preliminary layout show it. And you could buy storage in that tower, I would say.
Yeah, so I'm just kind of leaning towards like, are we at their mercy once we go with them, are we kind of just locked into them forevermore, I guess?
I, I, I'm just gonna keep coming back to you, the, basically, all these statements about how casserole can screw us, you're already talking about half of your city already, half of your service areas in this, residents in this city already have this issue, so I, I don't see that as being something that they want to, you know, basically be bad with the most of their current, current, you know, provide current, uh, consumers of their water. Now, I understand, we're just a bulk user, Horace would just be a bulk user, I understand that, but I, I, you know, I, I know we're all trying to hedge these bets, but to make this statement now, we've, we'll basically taint the negotiations going down the road.
I'm just trying to understand the, the options fully, and I, I guess the question does, it also relates to you guys as well, so can we put the whole entire city on Fargo if we want to? I don't, you know, just questions to more so understand what this means.
Right, Fargo has told us when we had these discussions last year that they have the water capacity to handle a full build out in our town if we decide to switch over to them, and I believe casserole has said that they are, that they can handle us to at a full build out, if I remember correctly, Jimmy, right, then they, they claim that as well.
Yep, Brian, can you scroll back up to about the third slide there, that map?
But you would also only, we would only be changing the current cer- the service area that you named, there would never be a point the casserole water would give up the other portion of the city that's on there.
Correct.
That is.
That's, that's the key, they're holding on to that, and they will not let go of it, so all you're gonna do is if you move to Fargo is you're gonna take that service area and move it to Fargo. You still will have casserole water users in our city.
Correct, always will, yeah.
So I just want to make sure everybody's clear that, that, that there would never be a point that the whole City of Horace could go to Fargo, to Fargo.
If casserole is holding you guys somewhat hostage, like they wouldn't give you guys up to Fargo if we really wanted that, then essentially we're just putting the rest of us in that hostage situation.
The intent was never to paint the rural waters as a, as a, you know, to be a hostage or holding you, holding you to something, it's just, it's, it's an option. And there, with every option, there comes advantages and disadvantages, and this is trying to get it all out there and talk about it and talk about it amongst yourselves, so.
Yes, yes.
We should probably workshop, workshop this a little bit and kind of get a, get a consensus or get an idea, I mean, like I said, John said, we're not gonna make a decision tonight.
Tonight, yeah.
Right, and that's, the, the thought was tonight was just to get some questions out there, talk about this a little bit, and now that we've got this in front of us, I'm just gonna, uh, suggest that all the council members take some time and digest this a little bit more. Um, talk to your, you know, especially the ones that are living in the, in Horace proper that are on the water system, what are they, what are their thoughts on this too? So when we talk to different people, we can get an idea, what is the thought process? Rates are gonna go up.
How far does casserole water go east in your territory?
All the way.
To the border, yeah.
It even extends into Fargo's ET, because Deer Creek is in, is in casserole service area with Fargo water.
Yeah, so even outside the blue area, it, casserole water's all the way around, all the way around Horace per se.
Fifty-second Avenue in South, John.
You know, honestly, this is such a, uh, community type s- situation. Why wouldn't, if another water tower got built, why would it not take capacity beyond Horace? Why would it not go east into Fargo and cover a lot of that area for everybody? I mean, that, that's the mentality that we have with regional attitude, why would it not continue? So, I, I just don't see where we would be taking on the total cost of another water tower. It would be maybe a shared portion.
I agree with you, John, it is, it's, it's planned in an overall south metro area. It's not just a little area, I mean, it's, it's, they're looking at it globally from the layouts that I've seen.
Yeah, John, the conversations that we've had to that, that other, if we put up a million gallon tank there, and I say we, is it a general area here? It would probably be shared with, uh, casserole and Fargo and us, and that's, that was a conversation I had probably a year and a half ago. But that's, I, I'm assuming it still holds true because their engineers have looked at this, what, as two in the south, south metro. Um, so, yeah, there's still gonna be some questions on that, though, so where, you know, how, what, how big an area would another one million gallon tank handle? You know, with us having a full build out and obviously with Fargo building south at some point here, so there'll be more conversations about that.
So the action item at this point is just to start getting some resident feedback, are we gonna send out a survey and get some more feedback from residents?
Yeah, I mean, it's, a, a survey would probably be okay, just to kind of get an idea, maybe we can condense some of these down and maybe put something up either on Facebook or on the city site, uh, for residents to just take a look at, because, you know.
Can we even do like a five-question survey monkey that we could put out, the standard questions and do something like that?
Of course we could, yeah, we could.
Yep, we've had good luck with the online surveys in other communities, so I agree with that, John.
It keeps it kind of directed in a specific question, and you get hopefully specific answers.
Well, I, I think maybe that's one of the actions, is we can take this presentation and make it into a PDF that people can review and watch and look at, uh, and, and then provide a, a survey, get some, get some direct feedback from residents.
Yep. Because we all know we're gonna have to do something, we are gonna run out of our allocation no matter what, doesn't matter how we play this right now, so what, what's the end game here? If, if we're playing at forty-two million right now, it's not gonna be too much longer before we're gonna be hitting our magical, uh, spot, then we're gonna have to have a, a plan in place to be able to handle it, so.
Yep, agreed.
I guess my only statement when we communicate is, you're, you're ju- right now, we're just talking about cost of producing water, do we have any, any estimate of general cost or per gallon cost to replace pipes, that kind of stuff, because if we're gonna talk about rate increases of some type, we should try and include, you know, this is the kind of numbers we're gonna be looking at to improve the system, plus over time rehabilitate the current infrastructure.
Not cost per, per gallon or cost per thousand, Dave.
Because I think the question is whether we would pay for that, was a capital project or whether we would pay for it through rates? That, that's, that's a decision yet to be made.
Yeah, we haven't gotten that far yet, guys, that's something, we got, that, that's like a separate conversation, that'll kind of slide after this one, once you kind of get.
But if it's a capital project, won't it be under that enterprise fund, though, and either?
But we could, we could apply for state funding for offsetting the cost of the replacing the lines. In the same way that, you know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna upgrade or connect to casserole water, for example, we can apply for state funding to cover the sum of that cost, we would do the same thing with the replacing water lines.
So you're talking cover some of the costs, or you're talking a low-interest loan that gets paid back?
Both, state water commission is a sixty, forty.
Okay.
And then you could go SRF, which is the two percent loan.
Okay, okay, so there is some specific funding, okay, I just thought that we would have to get some type of funding, meaning a loan that over time we would have to pay back, okay, so there is ways to get actual dollars that grants or whatever you want to call it, okay.
Right, there would be a loan, but we would try and get state funding to cover.
Some of, okay, all right, that makes sense.
Brian, you probably have to get a loan to cover some of it, but hopefully we can get some matching funds or whatever to knock this down substantially.
Okay, okay.
So, and does that change, does that change attitudes if there was, you know, if we get some of the cost of replacing the system or rehabilitating what we have? Does that change your attitude if a little bit of portion of it is covered by the state?
But that's what we don't know yet, I mean, that's why we have.
We don't know the amount, but does that change your, your answer, your, okay, I want to go this option versus this option? If you know that a good portion of it could be paid from state funds, rather than rates or cap, or, you know, we have to pay for a special it out.
Yep, yep, I, I'm sure it will change people's attitude towards it.
So, that's a factor, that's, it's hard to know.
So, one, one thing I do want to point out to council, and why we have this as an action item, is more action to accept the water study and its findings. What you'd see after that is, gets more into the details of discussion of what actions you guys want to do following through. So, just wanted to make sure we don't skip over that, but you know what the action is for, is accepting the water study.
Okay, just that that step is completed is what you're stating, Brenton?
Yes, because a lot of the discussion you guys are having, which is very good discussion, is talking about that next step.
Step.
Water study, can you, the findings and an engineering perspective and recommendation for what steps to do in the future? Then we're going to be getting into more of the political angle of, like you guys are talking about doing a survey and doing some other things, that's more of the political angle of a decision-making, so uh, the water study is really focusing on the meat and potatoes of what the engineering perspective sees as the best option for us.
So if we, you're looking for recommendations. We're accepting the recommendation as well?
No, you're accepting the water study that is completed. You're taking that recommendation in consideration, but you're going to look at other factors like the political side, the, you know, do, if we do a survey, asking folks whether they want, see, that's a, that's a different angle, so you're accepting the research and the considerations brought forward, but you would be, uh.
We're not making a final determination.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
It, it's basically accepting the, the results that there's no options that we haven't considered as part of the, the recommendation, so we're, we're willing to work within the recommendations that are presented in the, in the presentation.
Yep.
The water study. So that's really what it boils down to, so are you looking for a motion to approve the water study?
We're looking, if you give a motion and take action on that, uh, that also helps us close out that water study component.
So, I, I'll make that motion to approve the water study as presented.
Hey, Brian, make some motion, can I get a second?
I'll second that, Dave.
Got it, okay, Dave, all right, so in favor, say aye.
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 All right, unanimous, so that passes. All right, so obviously, we're gonna have some more discussion on that, um, who wants to be the one to put together the survey? Or at least help somebody here in the, in the office, one of the staff members put it together for us.
I can, I can help with, I mean, if we draft up the questions and so forth, we can, I can help with getting it finalized and to get it published.
Okay, fair enough, then we can get that, get that started, now give us some ideas as to what folks are thinking about, so. All right, we'll move on to number eleven then, uh, Barrett, you got the next one here.
Yeah, thank you, Matt, uh, if you wouldn't mind bringing up the PowerPoint presentation, uh, just gonna show you, uh, sort of the proposed language. So what you have before you, uh, well, I suppose I should kind of start with a brief overview, uh, as you know, it's tonight on our agenda, we have a lot of text amendments. A lot of these amendments seek to address issues that we ran into when we've been evaluating building permit applications, we're receiving development applications. And not only we're trying to resolve some of these issues, not only for staff and the applicant, but we're also looking for opportunities to be a little proactive and create some tweaks in, uh, the text amendment language, so that down the road, we can create future opportunities and reduce any, uh, issues that we currently deal with. Uh, so just, uh, start with number eleven, what you have before you is a, uh, two text amendments to the parking ordinances of the zoning ordinance. Uh, one seeks to address, uh, require, parking requirements for mini storage land uses, and the second, uh, part of that text amendment, uh, proposal is to create uh, the requirements for stacking areas, so, uh, before we, uh, I'll start with the mini storage land use, before we tackle that, of course, we did some research, we looked at some surrounding cities in our metro area, and if you go up, you'll see the table that I provided for you in the staff report, uh, where it shows that some of the communities in our area offer one space per two thousand five hundred square feet of storage space, and then also, uh, some of the communities offer, uh, parking ratios for retail areas, so that's what we attempted to address, we, uh, were offering a proposal of one space per two thousand five hundred square feet of, uh, uh, storage area, and if you go up, um, you'll see that we also offer one space for one thousand square feet of retail space area. Uh, also, it's kind of nice for our applicants, as we allow parking stalls to be against, uh, storage area stalls if they meet minimum dimensional standards. And then, uh, the second, uh, text mark proposal we have included in that is vehicle stacking areas, our code doesn't address this area. Uh, this has been borrowed from a neighboring community, uh, where it's shown and proven to work, and, uh, this is the proposal that we're bringing forward. Uh, please let me know if you have any questions, uh, we haven't received any comments, and staff is recommending approval.
All right, anybody have any questions on this, leave, I also need to do? So, um, Barrett, we were talking about the parking ordinances, this is just basically an update to kind of go along with what our comp plan, or is this just kind of to go along with just time to update this stuff?
Uh, this came to update us, just our iterative process of creating little tweaks with our zoning ordinances that we can address issues. Uh, this issue came up out of a building permit application, um, and we wanted to provide more clarification.
So, one of the questions that came in on the, uh, Q and A here is from a person in town here, says this question relates to on-street parking uh, that is recently being, being enforced, uh, we received warning tickets last weekend, however, since that time, there did no further enforcement of the parking requirements, what is the plan for enforcement, will it be enforced every night as written, if not, this provides confusion and frustration for those of us who may occasionally park on the streets overnight, not sure if that relates exactly to this, but, uh, I'll toss it out there.
Yeah, I, I would agree, this is a, uh, separate issue, this deals with off-street parking, not on-street parking.
Okay.
Just to touch base really quick, uh, Barrett said off-street parking, so it'd be onsite, so like, uh, parking lots. Uh, for the on-street parking issues, we still have, uh, no overnight parking, uh, the deputies have been, uh, they're, they've been trying to uh, get word out through education, the warnings, uh, however, uh, they've indicated if there's repeat, repeat offenders on that, after they've given uh, some warnings, uh, they will start issuing citations, I do not know if they've written any citations for on-street parking, but I know in talking with one of the deputies the other weekend, they were telling me that, uh, there were some that they were looking at doing that for already, where they've been given a warning and they'll, they've been in those whole parking, for and over again, so, uh, they are looking at addressing that and which would be some more enforcement of that soon.
Okay. Alright. So any other questions, guys, on this? Okay, if there's no other questions on that one, I'm gonna request a motion to accept as written.
Mr. Mayor, before you do that, do you want to open the public hearing for this?
Did I miss that? I'm sorry, Lucas.
No worries.
Okay, yeah, we'll open a public hearing on that for anybody. Got a question or comment about the ordinance?
Like there's a new question that came in. Somebody want to read that?
The question is, what would be the best option to suggest to change to city ordinance? Where can I find that information? So I think Brenton, the, the point there is that our city ordinances are available on the website. Is that correct? Brian, you can say that, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
City ordinances are available online. We also, if there are any questions regarding the ordinance, they can call C Hall and we could either answer it. But if we're able to answer a question by phone call, otherwise we get back with them too.
And for suggestions then for changing, you can contact the city as well, correct? Either through email or calling?
Yeah, that'd be contact city and they can talk to myself or Barrett. Just depends on where the most. It depends on what the requests are asking for, but in general, they just call C Hall and order us.
Okay, so like I said, we're open for public hearing on, on the parking ordinance amendment. If there are any other questions, anybody has? Once or twice. Alright, I'm gonna close the public hearing. If there's no other discussion, let's, uh, somebody wants to make a motion to accept the parking ordinance amendment as written.
So moved Chelsea.
Okay.
Well, second that, Brian.
Brian. Okay. Alright, so all in motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. We move on to number twelve. Barrett and Lucas again have this one, so go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Once again, this, we have another application for another text amendment proposal. This issue came up with a plan application that you've already reviewed. Lakeview addition where we had sixty-third street proposed as a collector's street. Our ordinances today require that any property that butts a high funk class road needs to have a seventy-five foot setback. And with the Lakeview addition proposal, the lots were seventy-five feet wide. Obviously, this was not feasible. When we kind of looked at this globally, we didn't think it would make sense. We, we kind of feel that seventy-five feet is kind of an egregious number. So what we proposed instead is to reduce that setback drastically down to fifteen feet. And then also, once again, we wanted to take the opportunity just to kind of clean up the language in our zoning ordinance. This requirement was stated under each and every single zoning district. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna remove that language from each zoning district paragraph. And we're gonna keep it in one section where we just simply state that it's fifteen feet. And once again, we didn't receive any comments and staff recommends as approved. As part of that approval, we did get feedback from the planning commission that they would like the city attorney to draft up language to make some sort of statement where that fifteen feet could be extended to a longer setback length under circumstances that would threaten health, safety and welfare.
Alright. We had a question here for you on that.
Probably not, that language is not provided today, but that would be provided during the second reading as an amended second reading.
Barrett, that, that should be included in the ordinance I provided to the city, so they should have that if they have the, the ordinance.
Okay.
Okay. Um, again, I'm assuming you guys, this one got talked about at planning and zoning, I'm assuming so?
Correct.
Okay.
For a very long time, yes.
Did they have any feedback on this? Or just, just any general comments there?
Yeah, I heard some interesting comments. It talked about right away, acquiring right away with, or adequate right away with for roads. We kind of thought that could already be done with the planning process or through alternative me, means of purchasing land. And we didn't feel that it was really appropriate to add additional setbacks, really gigantic egregious distances to preserve that land for future acquisition. So we felt that we could either, you know, through a city engineer, have him acquire that land or through easements. Or we would acquire right away with, appropriate right away, right away widths through plating. So we didn't feel that this, this was necessary and it could be greatly reduced. We understand that with roads that have higher, higher functional classifications that there are adverse traffic impacts and we did want to create a little bit more distance than the zoning districts already require. But it'd be significantly reduced and from what we already have. And then it would be more feasible and more realistic for the development applications that we're starting to see.
Okay, good. That's, I was just curious if they had some other comments. Instead, we can open this up for the public hearing as well. I don't know, does anybody have any questions? Right now on this? Again, I think we're just cleaning up things again, like we, kind of just an ongoing effort here to get some of our ordinances cleaned up and be realistic with where we're currently at with things. So. Anybody anywhere got any questions? Otherwise, I'm gonna go going once, going twice. I'm gonna close the public hearing. Alright, council, got any, any questions? Further questions? Otherwise, I'm gonna entertain a motion to accept the ordinance.
So moved.
Dave's second.
Okay, Brian, Dave. Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Alright, the next one on the list here, number thirteen, preliminary plat for second edition there, okay?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I figured I'd give you guys a little bit of a break from text amendments. We look at a preliminary plat here. Council member Schmidt, if you wouldn't mind, could you please pull up the PowerPoint so I can show the aerial imagery?
Oh.
Maps that were included on the document. Okay, thank you. Now, so Steph received an application for a preliminary plat titled Star Second Edition from Interstate Engineering on behalf of Rossar Chairman Sar to your flat lots, one through three block ones. Our first addition to combine them into one single nine point two four acre lot. Just for the purpose of the desire of the property owner with no anticipation of further improvements to the properties. And at this time, no land dedication recommendations have been received and no zoning change proposals have been brought forward. If you will, please go to the next slide. I just wanted to point out that of the three lots, the lot on the left is zone as our suburban residential. Two lots on the right are zoned R1 single-family residential. We just recommend that these zone, these lots get rezoned. The applicant has stated that he's willing to do that and we've added that as a condition of approval. He stated that he anticipates that he would rezone the two eastern lots to SR so that it becomes one SR suburban residential lot. And no comments were received. And the staff has evaluated the application and finds that the proposal is in line with the city of Forest. I comprehend some plans, so therefore staff recommends approval of the proposed preliminary plat with the condition to rezone as.
Alright, so. Alright, so with that, I was, I'll open it up for public comment too, if there's anybody that wants to make a comment or any questions on this. Seems pretty cut and dry. I don't really think there's much there. Questions, so I don't know if anybody got any questions, concerns, anybody anywhere? Going once, going twice. Okay, not hearing anything. I'm gonna close the public hearing. Council members, anybody any questions? Okay, so with that, then I'm gonna accept a motion here to accept the.
John, motion to approve.
John, get a second.
Second.
Chelsea does a second. Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Alright, motion carries. Alright. So the mixed-use zoning district. Barrett, I assume you got that one too?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Council member Schmidt, if you wouldn't mind pulling up my PowerPoint again.
Oh, it's in the PowerPoint again?
Uh, yes.
Oh, sure. Okay, sorry.
That's fine. Okay, yeah, if you could go to the next slide, please. Alright, thank you. So what you have before you today is a text amendment proposal to create a new zoning district. This one I'm pretty excited about. So we have a approved future land use map. You just approved a comprehensive plan. On that future land use map, we have areas designated as mixed use. If you could, please go to the next slide. So recently, beginning, we've been getting a lot of applications for mixed-use development. And we've had a lot of discussions on how we get that accomplished. We've been doing that recently with planned unit developments, which are pretty taxing and very burdensome now only on the applicant but on staff as well. So what we wanted to do is create a new zoning district that would allow for this development by right. This will provide an additional tool where we can allow for this development to exist and facilitate it more easily. If you can go to the next slide, please. So this is a nationwide proposal. This is nothing new. It's been around for a couple of decades. A couple of our other cities in our metro area already have zoning districts that accommodate this type of development. And I borrowed a lot of language from both of these cities. We have a lot of local examples. What's really great about this type of zoning district is that it kind of focuses on form and it's really flexible. So architects really love this type of language. It's kind of a form-based code hybrid where it allows for a lot of flexibility and creativity. If I could have you go to the next one, please. So the dimensional standards are pretty interesting. What we're trying to do is create a downtown from scratch. So in terms of setbacks, there is a front-back setback maximum. I'm sorry, the slide is incorrect here. We propose a ten-foot maximum setback, so it allows flexibility, but we still get that continuity of the kids going down the street. Also, it mitigates large surface parking lots in the front and it pushes them to either the side or the back of the building. So you can still provide an access drive and you can still provide for parking in the back. If I can go to the next slide, please. So what's going to need to is that we also have side setbacks of both zero on one side and up to seventy feet on the other to allow for an access drive. Now, when we look at height, we'd require a two-story minimum. And then we'd have a maximum height requirement of eight feet. And the hope is to create a two-story building facade down city streets. And if I can go to the next slide, please. With that, we'd also propose a one-point-oh-floor area ratio. The two examples that I have highlighted here are because there will be parking requirements under current zoning ordinance. These are some, some examples of what those buildings might look like under one-point-oh-floor area ratio. So either stacked as two or stacked as four stories, occupy twenty-five percent of the lot. But architects are not locked into these building forms. They can either expand them or add more or exceed that one-point-oh floor area ratio. It's just a minimal. If you could go to the next slide, please. So also what we did is we tried to make it easy for both staff and applicants. Instead of creating a list of uses that are permitted, we just created a list of land uses that are not permitted. So for example, we don't want adult entertainment uses. We didn't have a definition. We created one for it. Obviously, auto-oriented businesses, because you're trying to make this a pedestrian-friendly environment. And like I said, this is not new. This is currently done in various cities all over the United States. If I could even go to the next slide, please. Also, we got rid of landscape requirements, but we've also preserved design review by the planning commission. So that if the planning commission does want, does want landscaping, they can require it during the building permit review process. The reason why there's no landscape requirements is that we can allow applicants to do full site buildouts and occupy the whole lot. We had landscape requirements. They would be required to preserve areas of the lot to install the plant units. We also worked with the Park Board and we agreed on a four percent land dedication fee for this zoning district. If I could have you go to the next slide, please. So as a recommendation, or we haven't received any comments from the public in opposition or in support, the planning commission has looked at this over several months. They've provided lots of recommendations. We've made a lot of tweaks and we feel that this is ready to go forward and we're ready to create a new mixed-use zoning district and we can start building our downtown. Also, I wanted to note, we've had a lot of interest from developers. Lakeview additions have been proposed in the second phase around the man-made lake that this would be used. Also, I'd be pretty excited to call some other developers in our area who specialize in this type of development and have them build in city of course as well. Future plans would also include adopting a Renaissance own plan and coupling that with these mixed-use zoning districts to incentivize this type of development. Now, please let me know if you have any questions.
Okay, anybody have any questions here? Think I'll do is I'll just open it up for a public hearing at this point as well. So anybody anywhere has any questions or comments on this? Pretty quiet out there. So, alright, one more time. Anybody got any questions, comments? Again, I think this is something we talked about on and off.
Barrett, you said that this was approved by planning and zoning?
Correct, yep. This was approved by planning and zoning last week.
Yeah.
Okay. Just, just so you know, we actually spent months on this.
I know. Yeah, that wasn't something you just did overnight or in a week. This is a long process. So. Anybody else? Okay, with that, then I'm gonna close the public hearing. Alright, council's got any other questions? I'm gonna accept a motion.
John, still moving.
Okay, John, get a second.
Second.
Chelsea got it. Alright, so all in favor, say aye.
Alright. Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Moving on to item number fifteen, I believe. Public facilities. Barrett, you got this one too?
Alright. Last one, I promise. Another text amendment. This issue came up with a building permit is actually the school. The school is currently zoned agricultural and it did not meet the height restrictions of the agricultural zoning district. So if you could go to the next slide, please. We wanted to not only correct this issue, but we wanted to be proactive and offer some additional uses so that if we get other applications in the future with other uses proposed, we would, we propose to add these uses to public facilities. So we just wanted kind of a holistic solution. We figured that a school is a public building. It is a public facility. Public facilities, zoning districts do not have height restrictions. And if the school was zoned to PF public facilities, it would meet all of our zoning ordinances. We've talked to the West Fargo Public School District. They were in agreement. They submitted an application and you will see an application to rezone the school properties to public facilities on the road. We haven't received any comments in support or opposition and we recommend approval as stated in the staff report. Uh, we haven't received any comments in support or opposition and uh, we recommend approval uh, as stated in the staff report.
Okay, so let us um. Open up the public hearing right away. Guys have any questions or comments? Anyone, anywhere? Concerns? Alright. Going once. Going twice. Alright, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Uh, so anybody else have any comments, questions? Okay, then I'm gonna accept a motion to accept the recommendation.
Dave, so moved.
Okay.
John, second.
John did a second. Alright, all in favor say aye.
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 Alright, motion carries. Onto item number sixteen. Brenton, you got this one.
Okay, just basically a touch base on this, uh, the strategic plan. Uh, now we have our comprehensive plan completed. The comprehensive plan outlines the community as a whole of. Basically, we're taking the community, big picture, long-term plan. The strategic plan is, this gets into more of your shorter range. It gets into a little more detail of how can we work with each other, with different entities like the park board, our district. School district, different entities like that. Uh, also a little more on operations. So we get into a little more detail of um, how are we going to make this happen? So your comprehensive plan is your more high level, gives you a general vision. This refines it. Uh, this also gets into refining, uh, how are we going to keep our small-town feel? We talked about those concerns uh, with their comprehensive plan. So that small-town feel would get focused for the strategic plan. Um, what we have here, this would also be a continuation of uh, back, I believe it was late last year. We had, we were trying to bring back the visioning horse concept. Uh, this would be. Kickstarting that very hard and bringing in a special facilitator. That would be a neutral body to engage all the groups involved, not just city council. So the benefit of having that neutral facilitator is they're going to be able to help encourage participation. From all parties to get different perspectives. Uh, and they're going to be able to listen a little differently to the message. So what we have here is a proposal from consult, consulting firm called Hugh Life. Uh, they, they specialize in strategic planning, uh, also meeting facilitation, things like that. And they, they do a lot of trainings from the country on this measure also. Uh, we tried to seek out proposals from some other firms. Uh, one, I believe it was called Vision West out towards Vismark area and another firm down in the Twin Cities. And we didn't get a response at all. Uh, we engaged this one, Hugh Life. And they are interested. They weren't originally able to give us a proposal due to COVID. Being that we didn't get any other proposals, reached back out to them, could say at least responded and gave us interest. Uh, discussed a little more in detail what we're looking for and they generated. No, their proposal gives a range because we would probably do a little more scoping with them. But their range, when you add up the high-end, all detail, it comes out to just over twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, what I would be asking council or what I ask council for is that we had just set a budget for thirty thousand. Anticipate this, we would be under that by quite a bit. Uh, and our goal would be to stay under that. Uh, we don't have a set timeline of when we would be having this strategic planning meeting, like if it would be next month or. You know, July, August, we have a general idea when we'd like to is July and August. But we haven't locked that in yet because of uh, concerns of how would we engage. Different members of park board, council, planning commission. Uh, would we be able to have an in-person charrette or do we have to do this? We're all online uh, because of COVID. So there, there, there is quite a bit of flexibility with this. Um, but like I said, I don't expect us to even get close to that thirty thousand, but we want to have the flexibility. So we're not coming back to council over and over to be able to make this strategic plan happen. Um, overall timeline, once we, we'd have. Uh, a couple visioning or the charrette-type meeting, that'd be two full days. It's not going to involve. Everybody for those whole two days. It would be a combination of, okay, council members, we may need you for a portion here. Or maybe a full day. Park board, they might be engaged for a portion of that time. Uh, the ones that would be engaged the whole entire time that we'd be working with this consulting firm would be staff. Um, like myself, probably myself, Barrett. Um, we'd probably be the main ones that'd be working with us. As for, once we have the in-person visioning, then they would do a follow-up around ninety to a hundred twenty days later. Uh, to see where we're at and give a report or just see how, how we've progressed. Uh, they would also give us a report that would outline. Here's the detail, here's your community vision. And how you're going to get from point A to point B, with taking in the feedback, so. Um, like I said. We're throwing this up as a proposal, see if council would be receptive to doing this. And if so, uh, then we can engage Hugh Life and get the ball moving. As for how we pay for this, this would come out general fund. Uh, general fund, as I mentioned before, we're going, we're going to have budget amendments, especially with COVID. Uh, also just changes in how we have had different projects happen. Uh, revenue-wise, we're almost to the year budgeted amount for revenue for the general fund. And we're not even halfway through. Uh, that's due to different activity like building permits. And uh, we haven't really seen a drop in our state fundings or anything like that yet. Uh, but like I said, I believe our general fund, we are going to be fairly healthy this year uh, due to the building activity within town. So.
Yeah, so just to kind of follow up on Brett, what Brent's talking about here. We've done, you know, we, we did one of these a while back and then we, I started one last fall. But I think it kind of, we've, we've gone beyond like one of us trying to do this. Uh, so I think it's probably behooves us to have an outside individual who probably specializes in this type of area. To, you know, um, sit down with us and maybe quiz us in different areas and aspects and some things that we might have missed. And we've been talking about this. Maybe what we think are priority, maybe we have to focus our efforts on something else in a short haul here. So I think this is where Brett and came up with an individual that he has worked with in the past, I believe. So that's why we, this is why it got presented here. Um, but I think we need to do something more than what we did here this fall. Need to have somebody direct this a little bit more.
Well, that was one question I had is why now? Is there, what, what question is this trying to answer that would help us in our planning?
And I think it's probably, Brett, if you want to pick it up or I can.
I'd say, Corey, if you have your input, then I could expand on what you have too.
Okay, so when we talked about this last November, we had some ideas on the board. And now with this comp plan finally done, I think what it's going to do is maybe help us engage in putting together a priority list. Based upon the comp plans and those short-term recommendations. And then some of the things that we talked about to see what needs to get tackled first, second, and third, even though I know, I, I think we all have ideas. I think we should probably all unify our efforts to make sure. But I think somebody else should probably lead that effort so that we can bring in the park board and planning and zoning. Get everybody on the same page because again, we have a lot of balls. Which ones do we grab first to roll with?
Does this also involve some of the economic development aspects as well?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, that's just thing, it's part of the whole, that's, that's part of the whole game, game plan we're talking about here.
Cause I'm just thinking of who, who would be providing input to this? Is it a, is it primarily staff and, and us or is it residents and park board? You know, who, who are the primary?
Well, I think that's, I mean, that's something we haven't discussed as to, as to how far out. I mean, do we have, do we bring back an envisioned horse meeting one night and have him? Or facilitate this, you know, they basically ask the general questions. We could do the uh, the brief overview as to what has gone on up to this point. And then he can maybe ask some questions and maybe direct some more, direct some more energies in a certain area. I, I don't know. That's what I'm thinking too. It's just, this is a way to get this started again. I think we need to, you know, the envision horse thing that we did last time around was very valuable. It gave us a lot of good feedback. Okay, so here we are about three years later now. Things rolled along. Maybe it's time to revisit that a little bit more, along with the strategic, and help with the strategic planning.
Well, I think that's the key there, as you stated, Corey, is that strategic planning, we, 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 there's a lot of things we got going on. And as you said, a lot of balls in the air and we all think there are certain things important. And having somebody come in and help facilitate that can really make sure that we're focusing on the right things, whether it's capital projects. As Brian would have uh, concerns about or operational things or city vision, all those types of things. Somebody can help us along. As you said, it's, it's just a lot going on that. Um, I know there's a cost, but I think we need to have somebody who helps us through this process that's done it before through with cities.
Yeah, so this, they are going to engage in a variety of different groups. So Brian, you asked who we'd engage. I think it's basically everybody that we typically would. So like I said, the park board, uh, school district. Uh, fire district, but it's also going to engage in folks that we. Maybe haven't on a formal basis, but also informal. Um, so that's where the facilitator is going to think of, they're going to have different ideas than what we would. Uh, there's also going to be opportunity for the public to engage in this too. Uh, it won't be throughout the whole time. It's going to be in chunks, so that we're not taking up everybody's time, you know, full-day-long deals. Right now, some working groups where it's going to be a long period of time, but most of them are going to be smaller, maybe a half-day or a couple hours. And just trying to get feedback, so.
And, and the primary deliverable that they would give us is a, is a, what we should be working on or is it a timeline or just a prepared?
They, they refer to it as a blueprint. So take that recommendation section within the comprehensive plan and it'd be similar like that. Uh, they'd be looking at, you know, your measurable goals, uh, outcomes. But the comprehensive plan looks at a longer period of time. Uh, that's looking at like ten, twenty-year period of time. Where the strategic plan is really going to focus on a one-to-two-year. It's, it's going to be the, you know, you mentioned when, when the council approved uh, the conference plan. That was one of your guys' goals to have the comprehensive plan tackled. Well, this is basically like identifying those goals of where are the goals for the city to accomplish over the next couple of years. So, and how can we partner with the different organizations? How can we support each other? To get the most toward the community.
Okay.
I think it's a great idea. I don't know why we would do the comp plan and put effort into that and not. This is a great follow-up to it, I feel.
I mean, that's kind of what it is, John. It's follow-up to what, now that we've got this in front of us, the, the comp plan. We gotta get that strategic plan put together, just like what Brett said. We gotta be able to set some goals here. Focus out for the next three or four so that we can get these things moving along and it just doesn't become a cluttered mess.
I'm, I'm guessing Brent, uh, something that we could steer a different way if need be as we go through this. You know, it's probably one of those things that's not set a hundred percent in stone. It may be moving dollars from one thing to another, correct?
Yeah, you're not, I mean, having our comprehensive plan is going to help us move through this easier. But this allows us to maybe look at some, just some of our goals. A little more in-depth or put a little more of a tweak into them. Uh, that, that's what allows us to do. So, but these typically work in tandem uh, with comprehensive plan. That's why it's the great timing is do it just after you get done with comprehensive plan because it's fresh in everybody's mind. And then we can be able to pick up and get the detail and hit the floor running. Um, I have seen other communities where it's a, it's every, every two years. They would. Bring somebody in and just do this to refresh. And normally when they come back the second time, it goes a lot quicker because the ideas are still fresh. It's more of a. They're not searching to find every detail again, so.
Right, so I think a, a quick way that I can summarize this, John, maybe would be that the comprehensive plan is more of a macro area. And when we start getting the strategic planning, we're going for the micro. Burrowing in on things a little bit more to try and, you know, flesh this out and, and move things forward, so.
Absolutely.
So I think this is why we wanted to do this probably as soon as we can. Once, like I said, the, the comp plan is fresh in our minds and uh, this is just a good way to help facilitate that.
I make a motion, we accept their proposal, thirty thousand dollars.
I second that, Dave.
You make some motion, alright. We're spending money, guys. I'm gonna roll call this one, so, John?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Alright, unanimous, good. Okay, Brenton, let's try and get that set up and see if we can schedule out of time and we can get them up here. And then we can uh, start planning that event a little bit more, okay?
Yep, we'll work out the details this week with them.
Alright, you got seventeen here.
I'm gonna make this pretty quick. Uh, basically what we're asking for is just. Uh, council approval to update the rates and horse happenings, what we've been finding. Uh, previously, we would offer full-page, half-page, and quarter-page. Uh, and engage in working with Bobby on our staff here and her expertise. You know, we're also seeing that we're. We weren't offering really the full spectrum of what we were doing, what we could do or what fits. Uh, so this gives you some better options. It also matches up uh, the pricing, pricing or rates. That are more reflective of what you get. Um, so we're looking at introducing the one-eighth page ad. Which. We really, we had some of those in horse happenings, but. Uh, sometimes we'd have an issue where their graphic, the graphic from the individual wasn't big enough. Uh, so it gives another option there or affordable option. Uh, but if somebody wants to do a full-page ad. Though, you know, per issue that's four hundred dollars, but. Want to do it from here. Uh. What this is used for is to help offset our costs for horse happenings. And be able to continue to have a good product out there for residents. And we're still refining horse happenings. Uh, but it's constantly helping and getting better every time. So we just want people to update the rates and the agreement to where we can offer these.
Are we about breaking even with the, the advertising rates or are we not, are we underwater?
No, yeah, I, I think it covers about a third of our cost.
So we would essentially, when would this go into effect to apply for? Is it basically after, if we approve this, all future rates would have to be renegotiated for this, this new rate structure?
We would just, any new agreements would follow this rate structure. So we would honor what we had before, but any, anybody, cause sometimes we have renewals that happen in January, some that happen. You know, Ju- July, so it's just when they, it's time for them to have a renewal, this is when it would apply to them.
So we're, we're keeping tabs on the renewals. We're keeping tabs on those renewals so that we, we, we know when, you know, so-and-so. They, they need to renew and here's the new rate.
Yes, that's correct.
So they just need to know, we just need to publish it so that they know what that cost is.
Yeah, and our overall goal of having, you know, having ads and things like that and horse happenings. It was never to completely recover, cover our costs for horse happenings. It was to just be able to where we have a good product and be able to get the word out to folks. Cause really our overall goal is to get a, get information out to folks and um. You know, tell them what's going on in the community.
Uh, and also to, you know, let people know what businesses are actually in town.
Yeah, I mean, and we've had a tremendous amount of interest from, you know, just different businesses, continued interest. They're seeing that the quality of print is a lot stronger. Um, so there's more desire to have these ads now. So, uh, overall, also when you look at overall distribution of how many individuals get horse happenings. Um, and then based on our costs for like an ad, uh, we have fairly. Um, and then based on our costs for like an ad, uh, we have fairly reasonable, pretty low cost rate. Especially if you're trying to reach out to the horse area. Um, and a lot of people read it. So.
Make a motion that we accept the requested advertising, uh, rates and formats, I guess.
Okay. Dave makes a motion. Get a second?
I'll second that.
Brian?
Right.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Effective immediately, correct?
Right.
Yeah. Yep. Okay. Okay. Motion passes. All right. Okay. And moving along to number, okay, yeah, 18. Brenton, you got that one.
The next one here, many of you, I don't know if anybody has received a letter from the post office yet talking about uh, the construction and of a new post office in town and also, uh, just how their operations and services will be impacted this summer. Uh, the post office, they expect to have these changes effective June 1st. So little roughly a week. Oh, or a little over a week out, they want to be able to implement these changes. So it's pretty quick notice from them. Uh, but what they said, what they sent a letter out was informing folks that uh, we're working, the city and the post office are working together to have post or P O boxes available at C hall in the little hallway area. Uh, by doing that, this makes it to where residents that do have P O boxes do not have to go to the West Fargo post office to get their mail. Uh, that was a big concern. I know Mayor and I, we discussed this handful of times and uh, want to make sure that the construction of a new post office is not a burden on our residents here. So by offering that, it helps keep it to where residents don't have to go up to West Fargo. Uh, that's quite a ways to go to be able to get that. Uh, in their letter, they did not agree operations. Uh, things like if you want stamps, you know, packages, or if you have to interact with a, you know, post office employee. Uh, in conversations with, uh, one of the regional postmaster or the regional postmaster, I believe is for our Grand Forks, uh, for this area. Uh, he indicated that they are still looking into uh, how they want to handle operations, but we have offered to them, uh, some, you know, space, the council chambers. Uh, in the mornings, when they come to fill the P O boxes, they could have somebody over in the council chambers. Uh, being able to sell, sell folk stamps or take packages or whatever they choose to do. Uh, so we're offering that. We're waiting for confirmation from them of if they'd be able to offer that service or not. Uh, but like I said, we're trying to encourage partnership with the post office and also to make the construction of the post office the least burden, burdensome for our residents as much as possible.
So are they proposing to move the post office box that like the outside box? Are they going to move that over to city hall?
They have temporary boxes. The, so they do have like temporary units that they could put in and they would just put them against the wall in the hallway. And then they would put the drop boxes for like dropping off mail outside city hall, or they may have another location they choose. So, uh, so like I said, we're just trying to make as easy as possible for everybody and.
I, I was, it's funny because I just asked the post to answer this question today and they were telling me that it was, it was imminent that it was going to happen. So I was thinking it's probably a, this is a good first message. We should probably post something. You know, to let residents know that, you know, this is, this is, they're going to be impacted if they haven't received the letter already.
Yeah. Our plan was to post it after, so probably tomorrow, we wanted to be able to discuss that at the council meeting before we posted.
The post office has been kind of a little passionate thing of mine for many years. I was very vocal when they threatened to shut it down. We need to reach out to Hoven, to Kramer and to Armstrong tomorrow. And we need to make sure that they are on board, that this operation of starting a construction of a post office cannot start until adequate plan is in place. We have five days and they've got a bullshit plan. They, there, there's no reason why they couldn't do something better. We do not need our residents fumbling around, trying to get to West Fargo, trying to find stamps and all that. We, we've got some older residents. This is going to be a long drawn out deal. If we leave it up to them to try to solve. I'm sorry, but it just, it's too late. We've, we've gotta step it up and, and go straight to the top with it. We, we got results from reaching out last time and I think we could do it again.
Brenton, you talked to Wayne, right?
Yes, that was on Grand Forks. Uh, and like I said, we're waiting to hear back on about the operation. Uh, but we do have a good relationship with some of our elected officials. Uh, that's been established and we could do, we could reach out to them too. Um, whatever the council would like us to do.
I guess I have a question. Does that mean then that in our hallway or our main area of our office, where the bathrooms are, there's going to be, that's going to be open all the time, correct?
Uh, we can establish hours for that. Uh, but it would likely be open pretty much all the time. Uh, we would be making some adjustments to the security at city hall, such as instead of having a hollow frame door, we would put, you know, a solid door and.
I was gonna say, I would like to see improvements then to our, cause we have a significant amount of investment in technology and other things in that building that if that's going to be open now to the public, uh, longer periods of times, then those costs would have to be covered as well for both, all the doors that are there.
Dave, I don't know why temporary, you know, job trailer, temporary mobile building could be put in the parking lot there or somewhere adequate that would work. It could be.
Sure. If, yeah, if you do, if you can do something like that, then that'd be fantastic. I just.
I think there's other solutions out there that they need to, to realize that they could do a better job for us. Oh, the other aspect of it is talking with them over at the post office, they don't even know where they're going to be working. You know, the in-staff people, they're going to be in West Fargo. Are they, what are they really going to be doing? Uh, so you're upsetting a few, uh, employees over there as well.
Right. The thing is, I know, I know you mentioned a trailer, John. The thing is, this has all got to be, you know, handicap accessibility. There's all these other things that go along with it too. So yeah, I, I understand where you're coming from too. Um, but yeah, we could, I mean, we can certainly get ahold of them and express some of these concerns as we have in the past. Um, but, um, you know, again, we've been talking to Wayne. He's been the contact that, uh, we were told to deal with because he's the regional facilitator for the, for the post offices. So supposedly he's the one, our, he's our point person.
He's got somebody else breathing down his neck. It happened this way last time. They, they don't do anything until hear from somebody higher up the city.
Yep.
So that's the result that happened in the past.
Yeah. And what they're originally planning on doing is like I said, mentioned, they were planning on having to where or, or residents and horse with a P O box would have to go to West Fargo post office. And that's where we were trying to get them to work with us. Uh, to make, you know, at least have these off, services in town still. Even, even the city, we would have to go for city hall, we'd have to go to the or, or West Fargo post office.
Yep.
Yep. So even us at city hall would, yeah. So that's why it helps to work with them on this, but we know, I know what you're saying too of.
At least you got that headed off at the pass. Cause there was, that was silly to send absolutely everybody with a post office box into, into West Fargo to get their mail. That was, no.
Well, you've also got, how many people are mailing packages too in town?
Yep.
Yeah. Why, why not able this? Get, get, I, I'm sure there's a developer in a commercial area that would be more than happy to start off and build a building. I believe there was a plan that we approved not too long ago that would accommodate a, a building that could be turned over to a post office. You rent it out later as a model that they talked about. I, I don't think that'd be too hard to solve.
They have a building permit pending right now. And they have, my understanding is they have an agreement with the individual that has the current site of the post office to tear that building down and build a new one. So that, that's, it's not a local level decision for post office existing. They originally.
They have a, they have a pending building permit?
They have a building permit out right now with us.
We could have denied that.
Yeah.
I don't, I'll be.
Government on it too. So, yeah. It's.
Yeah. Okay. Well, maybe else get any more comments on the post office? All right. Point taken, John. Gotcha. And I know where you're coming from still. But let's move on to number 19 then. Jim?
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor and Council. I just have a couple of projects I'd like to update you on tonight. Uh, one of the comments that was brought up during the comprehensive plan was continuing the shared use path on the west side of County Road 17 Cheyenne North. Um, I was informed last week that the, uh, recreational trails program grant is open for applications until May 29th. That is the way that the first phase of that project was funded. The city has put in an application for transportation alternatives program funding um, for that second phase, but the department of transportation also recommended we put in for the second phase for that RTP. So we will be doing that. The application, like I said, is due May 29th. Um, the project will mirror what we had put in for, for, um, TA grant funds. And this is similar to the way we got the first one funded. We just kept alternating between TA and RTP money until one of them gave us some money. So we'll continue that process with the path going north. Um, I'll use the information that Chelsea got last time with the application. I'm happy to report that the Maple Grove drainage project is progressing. Met on the contractor, met with the contractor today. They were shaping up the, uh, dirt berms and the swales, putting in fresh, dry topsoil. And tomorrow morning they will be landscaping, finishing up the berm in the backyard and landscaping, seeding and, and hydro mulching tomorrow. So the, uh, conditions were finally favorable and to their credit, they jumped on it. So just keep on them to get it done. That's our, our plan with that. So. Um, 63rd street, that is the, uh, north south road east of the new high school and middle school. The plan is to start paving that with concrete pavement on Wednesday of this week. Cub Creek paving was completed last week. They're on to, so curb and gutter paving was complete. Now they're doing uh, street lights and backfill grading around the curb and gutter. Street light installation continues on the roundabout 76th and Adelman addition. Uh, there was some pavement repairs that were to be done on 76th avenue and they are in the process where the improvement came back and fix, fixing those. Um, we had a pre-construction conference in the last couple of weeks on Lost River Fifth Edition, Maple Lakes of State's Edition. And, uh, 81st Avenue, South of High School. Maple Lakes is going to start probably this week with a dozer out there moving dirt around, kind of shaping it and getting that site to drain. And Lost River Fifth is tentatively going to start next week after Memorial Day. I don't know if you've noticed with the shared use path, it's paved along County Road 17. They're pulling topsoil back today. A meeting with the county tomorrow on some things on it, but it looks like we will meet our completion date on that project. Knock on wood. I just jinxed it. I'm sorry, but very favorable to meet, meet, meet our completion date, our extended completion date on that project. So, um, the other item is the drainage. We talked about the old oxbow between Northwood and Southwood Drive. We are continuing to work on that. It does come up as a wetland in the search through the fish and wildlife. So we're working with, working through that to see what modifications and improvements can be made to that area without, uh, disturbing a wetland. So it's a, it's an ongoing process. But to have a quick rundown today, I'll have the more accurate, or I'll have a full report for you June 1st, but that's what I had for you tonight.
Any questions for Jim?
Do you have, will you have a, another update on Wall Avenue design approaches? Are we still pursuing that?
We are. Yep. I will check where we're at. I know the topo survey is complete. They'll check on the drawing, the drawing of that. And then the next step we had was some layouts prevent, present back. We wanted to identify layouts and then, uh, any additional right of way that would be, need to be procured, procured this summer. So I will bring something for you on the, at the first meeting in June. Yep.
Okay. Any others? All right. Then let's move on to the city administrator Brenton. Go ahead. You're on mute, dude.
Darn mute.
Mm-hmm.
I have one update for you. Uh, why, the reason why I was late to get onto the council meeting tonight, I was on, uh, West Fargo commission meeting, listening in on that and uh, discussing, we're discussing the Wild's 20th edition. Uh, if you recall a little, little while back, few meetings ago, council or state council, we presented to you the Wild's 20th edition, just more for your reference of what's going on. And also to get the council stance in regards to, um, improvements of the continuation ninth coming down to 64th. And then 64th and implication, implementations they would have on uh, the Greyhawk subdivision. If that continuation of ninth does not occur, then the concerns of increased traffic through Greyhawk subdivision, uh, those roads are not built to have a lot of traffic on them. Uh, with that Wild's 20th edition and all the what, really eighth through 20th and even more when they continue to build it out. Uh, and the schools being at 76, the high school and middle school. Our concerns were a lot of folks would cut through the Greyhawk subdivision, beat up our roads. And then the residents in the Greyhawk subdivision would have roads that are not adequate. Uh, falling apart due to all the traffic from those outside of their neighborhood. So what we were asking for, uh, was improvements at ninth to continue down to 64th. Uh, what the West Fargo City Commission voted to approve was putting $50,000 into an escrow for horse to be able to put from the developer for horse to put towards that. Now, $50,000 does not do much. Uh, that doesn't even get you halfway there for a gravel road. They didn't really feel that they should be paying for a road at all or holding a developer to it. So the feelings from West Fargo commission was this would be, uh, at least from what I got from that meeting was that this was a gesture from the developer and them to at least help out a little bit. Uh, they, at our council meeting, when we spoke about this last time, was if there wasn't going to be adequate accommodations to get that traffic to 64th. Uh, then council is interested in having a gate blocking out the Greyhawk subdivision to the Wilds. Uh, to, to really keep the roads from getting destroyed. So, uh, that's where we're at. Uh, West Fargo commission, they vote to approve the Wild's 20th. Uh, and like I said, with just that 50,000 in escrow, we could pull upon if we were to do improvements to ninth continuation down. So not the outcome we were hoping for, but that's an update for the council.
Okay. Anybody got any questions for Brent? All right. We'll move on to portfolios. Um, had a couple of things. A big shout out to the Lions Club in town here. Uh, Key Sutcliffe set all this up to get those banners put together. And we got in the city, uh, public works guys did a fantastic job of getting them up last Thursday. Um, got the, got the flags up too for Memorial Day at the same time. So that was a double bonus. And we got a little press on that where WD Y came out and interviewed a couple of the seniors who were quite happy with those banners. So that was a good thing. Um, I think that was a fantastic idea on the Lions part and I'm glad they did it. Cause that was a, a lot of, we got a lot of good feedback on that from residents and the parents. I thought that was great. Cause the kids have had kind of a, a rough, rough final bit to their senior year. So we did a little something to cheer them up. Along with that, um, we're looking, it won't be this Friday, but it'll be the following Friday about putting together a parade of cars. Basically what we would do is, uh, line up probably down on 100th Avenue. This is just preliminary talk right now. And we'd like to have the kids go park by their, um, banner. And we'd do a parade and honk the horns or whatever we want to do. We'll come up with something, but I mean, just to kind of let them, just to have, let them have a little time with it. Um, I've already contacted the sheriff's department and it looks like we're okay doing that. We'll just kind of give a little heads up as to when and what time, and they can help us do some traffic control. So we can do the parade. Um, a few other logistics we're working through right now, but, uh, we'll make more of a splash announcement of that here. Once we get a few more details worked out, but it would probably, like I said, not this Friday, it's following Friday, start seven o'clock and then go till it's done, which I'm guessing would probably be somewhere between a half an hour and 45 minutes. So anyway. So, anyway, just something more for the seniors, uh, that'll be their weekend of graduation, so we'll just kind of make an action packed weekend of it. Um, the other thing is, I'm hoping tonight we'll find out for sure, but I. Whether the Memorial Day services that are usually held around town here will be going on on Memorial Day on Monday. Um, so when I hear about that, we'll make some announcement on the city site, let everybody know whether the ceremonies are going to be going on or not. And what other changes might have happened, but I think the consensus that I got is they want to do it, but they are meeting tonight to let you know. Um, that's pretty much what I've got, moving on to John, what do you got, anything, John?
I'm nothing tonight.
Okay, uh, let's see, Dave, got anything?
Yeah, just to update everybody on our open positions, um, we've done some hiring and I think, not hiring, sorry, interviews. And, uh, we have a couple of candidates for, we have a candidate for the, uh, Public Works and one for the communication specialist that. Brenton's trying to work through getting those offers out and and that type of thing, so we'll hopefully get an update by the next meeting that we have a couple of new hires, so. Appreciate everybody who have done the interviews and, uh, everybody coming through, it looks, looks like two very good candidates too. Public Works person has experience already at Public Works and cities around the area, so.
Perfect, good, anything else, Dave?
Nope, that'll be it.
Chelsea, what do you got?
Uh, nothing.
Okay, fair enough, Brian?
Um, two things, one, uh, we did complete a upgrade to the City Hall with the wireless network over the last. Week, so I I think Brenton, everything is, appears to be online and throughput and so forth has improved, I'm assuming.
Yes, it seems to be working pretty good for us.
So, one of the big drivers.
Network a little bit and it's going, uh, I'm I'm starting to notice a little difference in the speed, so.
One of the, one of the reasons was upgrading the capacity, uh, of and improve the security, uh, because we have a much. Stronger firewall now protecting us, protecting the local network and the viewers, that was important, uh, but also. Uh, getting, getting us so that it wouldn't, and I think when we were having larger groups, uh, at city council. Uh, that they were tapping out the the capacity of the current wireless network. Which was causing some of the, some of us to not be able to connect and get access like we expected, so, uh, that was one of the reasons. But also to get, uh, a wireless network over into the Public Works area, their office area and the shop so that they have a connected network as well, so. Uh, that, uh, work is completed and I think we're just waiting to to sign off on the, on the project and. And that will be wrapped up, so appreciate, uh, the help from Marco to help get that done. Uh, so the second thing, I guess it was more of a question that I probably could have asked Brenton. Uh, is, or you Corey, what is the plan for, uh, are we gonna go back to our normal in-person meetings from beginning of June or what's our strategy here?
I think we're, I, what I'd like to do is, I'm going to give this another week and see if Doug's got some more recommendations, they're slowly unwinding things here. I'm trying to get an idea if he's going to start allowing, you know, something or have any specifics on that. Um, it's still going to be that they want to have, you know, less than ten people in a room and then spread out type of thing, which we could probably accommodate here. Um, but. Let's, let's see, let's, let's wait till next week and then we can maybe make a better judgment call on that, I'd like to get everybody back under the roof again, so. That's, that's what I'm inclined to do, but let's see if there's any reason why we can't.
The challenge we're going to face is if, you know, a bunch of people want to attend. Yeah, it's going to be difficult to to basically force people to stay outside because they can't attend the meeting. The, and we'll be able to, you know, stream, but we won't be able to have this Zoom meeting if.
Right, and that's what the thing is, every, there, the concern is, and that's, this has been talked about the governor's office too, is that if they allow something like that. How do you accommodate a a large meeting when you have a controversial issue and you're going to want to fill the room, how do you do that? That's, that's going to be the issue.
I mean, technically, we're, we are a gathering of under two hundred and fifty people, but. Doesn't really qualify into the spirit of what they were thinking when they said it's under two hundred and fifty.
Not that, not that we ever have anything controversial and anybody have to come to a meeting, right?
Right, right.
Just saying though, because that's, that's been the concern, so that's why they've been really a little bit reluctant to kind of open. Some of that other stuff up, even though I know they're talking about events now and, uh. That type of thing, because it's graduation, it's wedding season, so I mean, that's been the other thing.
Well, I, and the other, the other side of this is, are are we, Brenton, are we now opening up the City Hall to normal? Allowing people to come in and visit City Hall, what's, what's the strategy there for opening up the City Hall offices?
City Hall is open, we've done more of a quiet open or quiet opening, so the. Uh, yeah, really, we've had, uh. Handful of folks come in, but it's normally straight building permit.
The point of the matter is the doors no longer locked like it was some period.
Doors not locked, we did that before the last council meeting and also the last council meeting. So that, that doors are open, uh, and like even for these meetings, I'm at City Hall. And the doors open, folks are able to come here.
And I, you know, you're just letting people do the, the protocols, you know, social distancing, wear a mask, you know, do that kind of, just. Do the things that kind of are required right now, we'll get through this, so, that's the, the doors are open, go ahead, Russ, you had one there, I know.
Yeah, I, the, uh. The thing I think you need to. Metro Cog is probably going to be going back to a meeting format, but they're going to have some kind of combination. Because there are some of us who are of an age that we're not coming up until we've had a vaccine.
Right.
So we can, we can decide in next week whether we want to continue with a Zoom meeting, you know, for allowing some people to to connect remotely. You know, if, so we'll, we'll, we'll continue that conversation.
Yep, and it might be such a thing where we have a mixed deal where some of us will be here and some, you know, will, will be online, it. We'll work something out.
Right.
So.
Yeah, the, don't, don't get me wrong, I'm all in favor of opening the country back up.
I understand, but Russ, you look to be in a, you look to be in a very nice place now, you got palm trees in the background, that looks nice, stay there and enjoy yourself.
The problem is, I can't go back there until I have a vaccine.
I hear you, uh, anyway. Okay, the other thing I was going to bring up that I keep forgetting, folks, if you haven't done the census yet, get it done, we're, we're like number eighth in the state now. We got to get it, get our numbers up, I think we're like seventy seven and a half percent, let's get it to a hundred, we need to be counted because that's how we get. Uh, allocated for funds and. Want everybody to get counted, so I'm just going to throw that plug out there, I think we should probably start pushing that up on our. Facebook site too, just to remind people, don't wait, get her done. Alright, anything else, guys, that we missed or need to talk about? Otherwise, I accept a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Brian? Who else, second?
Dave second.
Dave second, okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, alright, and we are done, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, have a good evening.
Yeah, bye.